Hey, good evening.
Hi Andrew, this is Sally.
Hey Sally, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. There's still an executive session, so if you just want to hang out.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely, no problem.
Sally, without an executive session.
I think that's a big screw up.
I think he wants to talk to his lawyer.
How was your speaker?
My speaker is not on. My mic is not on. I don't know, is it? Is he getting feedback?
What is my mic on?
Sugar.
Not mine.
Maybe yours. Maybe from this?
No, that's the main.
It's coming from over there. Because you're speaking? Not, not, not you mute button, where you hear from.
I'm going to mute.
Yeah.
But it's.
Hold on, does it stop? Nora talk.
Hi. Yep, I think it stopped.
I think it stopped.
Yep. It's different though, it's the output from the computer.
Yeah.
It's not the Zoom mute.
It's not, yeah, it's not the Zoom.
Andrew Wade.
Hello, sir.
All right, good evening. We have. Andrew Wade, he is from the US Geological Service. Jerry, is Andrew going to present to us?
Yeah, he's going to tell us about the USGS River gauges, spelled incorrectly by him, correctly by me. The benefit of them and how they work, so that the Board of Trustees knows exactly what we're getting for, from, from the USGS program. Take it away, sir.
Okay, well, appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to jump on the call here. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, but glad to connect via Zoom here and present a few slides on the USGF Gauging Network. Let me see, typically we use Teams here at work, so we don't use Zoom all that much. Let me see if I can navigate this all right and get this slideshow up on the screen. Okay, tell me if you can see that.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, super, excellent, got it to work. So, like I said, appreciate the opportunity to present some slides here and some information on the USGF Gauge Network and how our gauges work. Some of the things that I spoke with Jerry about and seem to be of interest are the types of gauges that the USGS operates, maybe some example photos of what they look like, the components of a stream gauge, what goes into making them work, what's included in the operation and maintenance. We can look at some real-time data on the web to see what some real-time data looks like, if you're not familiar with that. We can talk about the Water Alert Program, which is a pretty slick program that a lot of folks take advantage of. And then we can look at the proposed gauge locations and where we stand as far as some of those sites. And then we can look at sort of the depth and breadth of the network as it exists in New York. I know there were some questions about gauges that may be in areas close by and the expanse of the network throughout New York, so we can certainly talk about that too. So those are the things I plan to talk about. I have about fifteen or sixteen slides. And if you want to stop me in between, please feel free to do so, and I can answer any questions now or at the end. So these are a couple of caricatures of what our typical gauges look like, just to give you a little bit of background. On the left, on the left, we have what we call a stilling well. And this has been sort of the gold standard in gauges for many years, although we typically don't install these anymore. They are fairly big. And I have some pictures and examples of that, but basically a stilling well is a shelter that you can walk, physically walk into, and you'd be standing on a floor right about here. Can you see my cursor as I have it on the screen there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So you would be standing on a floor right here above a well, and the water in the well is connected to the water in the river by way of these intake pipes. So when the water in the river rises, the water would be forced through the intake pipes, the water in the well would rise. And then we have a float on the surface of the water in the well that would rise with the water, and it would, it would rotate what we call a shaft encoder. It would turn that rotation into a water level change. And we have instruments in here that would record the water level. And then we would transmit it via satellite, via GOES satellite. So this is, this is what a typical gauge looked like over the years. These have been in place for forty, fifty, sixty plus years. Anymore, what we do is we put in these pressure systems, and these are much more compact, they're smaller, and this is what would be installed if we proceed with the Mariner neck sites. This is basically a steel or aluminum box, about two, three, two feet by three feet, give or take. And in the water, instead of having a stilling well and intake pipes, we have a low-pressure airline. And this low-pressure airline is supplied compressed air by a mini compressor. It's a gas purge system, but a mini compressor inside the shelter. And what this does is it pushes air out into the stream and it measures the pressure of the water over the end of the cap here. And then that pressure is sensed by a pressure sensor, this thing here called a non-submersible pressure transducer. And it measures, it measures that water pressure, and then it converts it to a water level. And then the water level is read by our data logger, which records the data and then transmits the data via GOES satellite. And each of these gauges are powered by a 12-volt battery system. This does not require AC power, so they're standalone. Some of our gauges do have AC power for various reasons, but, but most of our gauges do not. These are just operated by battery. And we have power supplemented by a solar panel. So our normal data measuring and transmitting schedule is we measure, we record data every fifteen minutes, and we transmit data every hour. So every time we transmit data once an hour, four values come through over the, over the previous hour. For sites that are small drainage area sites like these here in the Mariner neck that are being considered for flood monitoring, we could, we have the ability to transmit every fifteen minutes instead of every sixty minutes. And we could record data at a more rapid interval, five minutes instead of fifteen. So every time we transmit on the fifteen minute, on the fifteen minute value, we'd get three, three values that come through. So it's, it's a bit better on smaller drainage area sites and sites that tend to be flashy and sites that may be used for flood monitoring like these here. And a couple of quick pictures, this is what some of our gauges look like. These are, this is a stilling well right here in the middle, and this is basically a big old walk-in gauge. You'd be standing on top of a floor that's over a well. The well is connected to the river by intakes, and it has that shaft encoder on the shelf. And again, this is our, our GOES transmitting antenna. This site happens to have AC power, but most of them do not. These are the pressure systems, and these are what we would install at the Mariner neck should this be approved. These are again like little two-by-three shelters. This one on a pedestal, of course. And we have a pressure line that runs from here down the wing wall of this, of this particular bridge location. And supplemented, the power supplemented by solar panel. We have GOES antennas here, and we have the same setup over here on the right. This one's just not on a pedestal, it's on the side of a bridge wing wall. So same type of setup, and I'll show you a quick image of what the equipment inside looks like. This is, this is a pressure site. This right here is the two, this is just a protective casing, but the, the pressure line is inside here. This goes down into the river. It's supplied pressure by a mini compressor inside here. I don't have a picture of the compressor itself, but this is, this is the box that the compressor is in. The pressure is measured by this stage sensor, which converts the pressure to water level. And the water level is sent over to our data logger. The data logger records it and transmits it via GOES, and this antenna, you can't see it, but up on top of this antenna, we have a solar panel and a GOES transmitting antenna. And the entire system is powered by a 12-volt battery that's charged via, via solar panel. And another, another example of that real quick is the same thing. This is a little more compact because our, our compressor and our water level sensor are contained in the same box, but nonetheless, it operates the same way. Compressor, water level sensor, this is our recorder and transmitter that transmits via GOES satellite, all powered by a 12-volt battery.
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
Is there ever a point where the intake for either a pressure system or the sitting well gets clogged?
Yes, it's possible for that to happen. So I was going to talk a little bit in a couple of slides down the road about, about maintenance that we do to keep these things operating and how we confirm that the equipment is working properly. So that's a great question, but yes, that can happen, and we do have a routine maintenance that we perform on all these, make sure they're working. So let's, actually, that, that kind of is a great segue into the next slide. So one thing that the USGS mandates nationwide, and there's USGF in every state, this is not a New York specific agency. We are mandated to confirm that our data logger is recording data correctly. So for example, if we go out and you look on the web and you see that the gauge height or the water level, stage, all interchangeable terms, are, i- if it looks like it's reading five feet, we want to make sure that it actually is reading five feet. And so we, we have what we call reference gauges. So this is a staff gauge, it looks like a ruler that's in the water. And basically what we do is we come out here and we install this and we survey this to known elevations, and this is, this is what I call our reference gauge, because when we set up our data logger, we, we set the values that the data logger reads according to this known surveyed instrument. So it, this is, it's not digital, it's not mechanical, it's just a ruler on the side of the bridge. I call it a ruler, it's a staff gauge. But it's a surveyed instrument, and so all of our recording instruments are referenced to this, hence this is a reference gauge. And the same thing is true over here. So this is what we call a wire weight gauge. And this is also a reference gauge, and it's a surveyed gauge. And so this sits on the side of a bridge, and it literally has a spool of wire, it's all calibrated. And it has a weight on it, and we lower the weight down, and if it's on a bridge like this, we lower the weight down until it touches the water surface. And then we have a readout on the instrument that tells us what the water surface is. Now, this is a reference gauge because we come in and we survey the elevation of the weight when it's down low. So we know for certain that this is reading accurately because we survey it. We. I don't want to say we don't know with certainty that our recorder is reading right, but in order to verify that our recorder is reading right, we, we compare it to what we know with certainty, and we know this is correct. So if there's ever a difference between our recorder and our reference gauge, we would fix, we would, we, first of all, we'd troubleshoot to see if there's any issue that, that makes them read differently. But assuming that it's just drifting, we would then correct our recorder to read the same thing as our reference gauge. And that's why we have these out here. In addition to correcting and verifying our normal everyday readings, you know, the, the one piece of information that, that is always a hot-button piece of information is the, is the annual peak water level and discharge that we, that we measure at our gauges. And in the case of these gauges being considered from the Mariner neck, these are water level only, so there's no flow, there's no discharge that we're measuring, so they're just water level. And we have these instruments here called crest stage gauges or CSGs. And these, these are actually fairly low-tech instruments, but they work like a champ, and I'll try to describe how they work here. So this is basically a two-inch pipe that's mounted to the wall. At the bottom, there's a cap, and at the, at the top of the pipe, there's a cap. Both of those caps are perforated, so water can, can go inside the pipe. And in the, and this bottom cap is surveyed, so we know the elevation of this bottom cap. Inside the pipe, we have a one-by-two stick. Essentially, it's a crest age gauge stick, very simple. And in the bottom of the cap, what we do is we put this very fine granulated cork. It's like, it's almost like dust. And so when the water level rises, and it, you know, because this is perforated, the water enters the pipe. Let's say the water gets up to this line right here. What will happen is the cork that's in the CSG and the crest age gauge will, will float. And when the water recedes and the water leaves the pipe, it will leave a cork line on the stick that's inside this pipe. And so what we do, every time we come out to the gauge, we pull this stick physically out of the pipe, and we can measure the distance from the surveyed cap to the cork line, and we know by an alternate means how high the water got. And then that will help us to confirm our annual peak recorded gauge height at our gauges. So this is pretty much, it's mandated by USGS policy that we confirm our annual recorded peak, and this is by far the most common way that most offices do it, including New York. So this is, this is a crest age gauge. Every one of our sites has one of these, and it's an independent verification of our peak stage. Does that make sense? And it, it's super, it's super low-tech, and I could show you a picture, a picture of how it works, but it's, it's, they are very, very accurate.
Egyptian technology.
Yeah, there you go, right? So this, in summary, this is, this is just another picture, and I'll move on to, to things after this, but this is a, this is a crest age gauge at a site that was recently installed, maybe a year ago. This is a wire weight gauge, and this is the, the end of the pressure line as it terminates in the river. And so there's a cap here, and if, if we were up close, you'd actually see little air bubbles. You can't see them in this picture, but you'd see air bubbles pushing out of here periodically from that compressor.
Is there, is there a streak, is there a screen on the end of that, or is it just open?
Uh, no, no, there, there's, there's a cap that goes on the end of this. Some of them are metal, some of them are plastic, but nonetheless, it has a tiny little hole. You couldn't even push, you could push like a pipe cleaner in it, that kind of thing. And so it, it, it's intended specifically for this application. So if we do have sites that tend to get sediment in them, that could, like, like to answer your question before, did these ever get kind of, do they get covered in debris? Yes, they can. And so we have, if we have sites that tend to be very silty sites, we can put this, it's hard to describe, but it basically looks like a turtle shell on the end of one of these lines, and it helps the debris stay out of the end of the cap. Also, if we have sites that are very turbulent, you know, and you have a lot of wavy water, it helps spill that water. So we get a, we get a better, more, less noisy trace of data.
We, we definitely have a lot of silt.
Yeah, so that's something we would evaluate as far as what we want to put on the end of that line to keep the silt from, from kind of burning up the end of this thing, yep.
Andrew, can you tell us where this location is, and as you move along with the presentation, can you give us examples of where this kind of equipment has been installed and how it's working?
I, I can, yeah. I, this particular picture, I'd have to go back to my archives. Anytime I see a, a good representative picture of some installs, I, I like to grab that as an example. So off the top of my head, I'd have to look back in our, in our archives to see where I pulled this picture from. But a lot of these pictures are sites that were installed about two years ago on, on rivers that are tributary to Lake Erie. And this is one of those sites, I just can't remember the specific location of this picture. But I, I do have a map that I'll show, that shows all of our gauges and where they are throughout the state. And then I have a map that, that's, that you can access, anybody can access, that that shows gauges throughout the country. And so we'll, we'll take a look at that here in a minute as well. So we talked about operation and maintenance, and what's included, and what do we do, first of all, to keep, make sure our gauges work right. But then what do we do to make sure over the long haul, they're, they continue to work properly? So what we do is once the gauge is installed and operational, we visit it every approximately eight weeks, plus or minus, every two months, and we, and we do routine servicing on the gauge. That means we read the data loggers, we read our reference gauges, we make sure everything's high and tight as far as the install, nothing is shifted or moved. We come out and we do special inspections as needed. So for example, you had mentioned some of the debris that collects on these, these sensors in the river. If we get debris on a sensor, typically we would start to notice it on the data that you see online. The data may be, start to become a little more noisy, or it may become a little more jumpy. And so that would cause us to go out and service that, that sensor that's in the river. So that would be a special inspection. Inevitably, electronics sometimes have little gremlins and glitches, so we would go out there and we would troubleshoot any electronic issues that we have. Sometimes, you know, we're transmitting via GOES, so sometimes we'll have a cable issue. Anyhow, the point is, we go out there with, on special trips as needed. And we can see right away, if a gauge goes down on the web, you'll see right away that it's down, and we, we hightail it out there. We also do troubleshooting and equipment upgrades, and these, these, this is all part of O and M, so there's no added expense for equipment upgrades. If we, you know, if there's a data logger that fails and we have to replace it, we did, you know, there's no passing costs along, that's all included in O and M. And we do, we do swap out our equipment, you know, fair amount to upgrade it and to keep it operational. And then we, we do routine maintenance, including surveying, like you can see in the pictures here. So one thing, one thing we want to ensure is that our, our reference gauges and all our equipment is not moving, right? So if you're, if your sensor in the river moves, then it, it throws into question the data that it collects. So we want to make sure it's stable, as well as our reference marks and our, our reference gauges. And so we go out here and we set RPs, which is a reference point, and reference marks, and, and we survey our reference gauges every year for the first three years, and then once we determine that all For the first three years and then once we determine that all the marks are stable, then we survey all of our gauges every three years. So that's part of the routine maintenance that that is part of the O and M uh, that that is covered. And talking about real time data, uh, if you are familiar with USGS data, then you've seen these plots before. If you're not, then we can step through some of this. This is a gauge on Hempstead Lake. This is on Long Island, uh, so I just use it as an example here. But if you're familiar with USGS data, you've probably seen a plot like this. This is just water level. On the left vertical axis, this is uh, elevation, lake elevation. Uh, if this was a riverine site, this would be what we call gauge height or stage, which is water level. Uh, and on the bottom, of course, is your, is your time step and. Um, this is what we call our legacy page. So all of our pages, all our webpages are maintained at a national level. The data that we produce on the webpage, we we determine what goes on the webpage. But as far as the maintenance of the webpage, that's done at a national level. And the USGS is moving to what they call a next gen webpage. And so that's what's pictured here on the right, that it's displaying the same exact data. Uh, except for this is a newer page that has different features that this cannot accommodate. The legacy page. Uh, and you know, security risks, et cetera, have forced them to sort of to look forward into into this next gen. Um, webpages that appears here. So these pages, these legacy pages. Are still available and you'll still see them on the web. They're going to be fully decommissioned. In July of twenty twenty-three next year. Uh, and these next gen pages are what you will be redirected to if you go search for USGS gauge. This is what you'll find. On the web, these next gen pages. There is a link. Right up here and we can go to a real time page if you want to see it. There is a link here for legacy page. And if you click that link, it will step you back to this legacy page, which is is familiar to a lot of users because this is what's been in place for for many years. Um, anyhow, with the new page, you can, you can look at all the same data. You can look at multiple plots and we, again, I, what I, what I want to do is I want to pull up this gauge right here. This is the Bronx River. So it's not too far from where you are. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this site, but we can look at this. Uh, and and check out what you can do on the, on the new next gen page. I figure I'd go through the rest of the slides here and then we could, we could pull that up. Now, one thing that a lot of users and I know, uh, I shouldn't say I know, but I suspect you might have interest in. It for particularly for flood monitoring is this program called Water Alert. So this has been around for many years and it's been, it's been um, integrated into the new next gen page. Basically what Water Alert is, is it's an automated system that will send. A user either a a text on their cell phone or an email. When a certain user defined threshold is exceeded. So for example, if you're looking, again, this is, this is Hempstead Lake, so maybe not the best example, but nonetheless, we'll go with it. If you want to know when Hempstead Lake gets above eighteen point six feet. You can set up a water alert for eighteen point six feet and anytime that threshold is exceeded, whether high or low. Uh, it will send you, the system Water Alert will send you a message. Um, and and this is totally user defined. So the USGS does not define this. You as the user. Define this, maybe a homeowner might have interest if they live along a river of a certain gauge height that's of interest to them. Um, anyhow, I'll I'll step through how to set up a water alert here. And if we want to do it together on a, on an actual real time page, we can do that. Uh, but when you're on our next gen page, any parameter that you can see in real time. You can set up a water alert for. So so Hempstead Lake is just a water level site, much like the Mamaroneck sites would be. So the only water alert you can set up is one for water level. But for example, the Bronx River site that we can look at later, that has water level, it has discharge. Flow rate, it has um, a whole host of water quality parameters as well. So if you want to set up a water alert based on any of those parameters, you can do it. So if you want to know when the flow reaches a thousand cubic feet per second. You can set up that as a water alert and you'll get a notification. In this case, and in the case of the proposed gauges, it would just be water level because they're they're just water level gauges. So you would need to create an account and login to Water Alert in order to use this, but it's a fairly simple process. And and this is how you do it. From the next gen page, you would, let me go back there. From the next gen page, you would pick, click, you would, you would select the parameter you're interested in, in this case, water level. You'd click subscribe to alerts. And it would take you to this page right here. It shows that you're signed in. And it shows you what what site we're at, what location. And now you want to create an alert for this location. And here's where you set up the criteria and the thresholds that you're interested in. So for example, if you're interested in water level more than greater than five feet. You would put a five here and it would show you a little, a little graph here, but you put in five feet. If you wanted to see a water level of less than a certain amount, like for example, when a re- reservoir gets really low. And you're, you have concerns about, you know, an intake going out of water, like that. Something like that, you could set up a threshold below a certain level. Or if you wanted to know, this is just a screen capture, so I can't click any, whoops, this is a, so I can't click anything here. But if you wanted to know a a water level between two values, I want to know when the water level is between five and eight feet. You could click this value, this box right here, and you could choose the lower boundary and the upper boundary of what you're looking for. And then you select how often you want to be notified. You want to be notified daily when this threshold is exceeded. Or you want to be notified every hour. You can select that and then you select how you want to be notified, your email address or your cell phone number. And so you would get those automated alerts based on however you set up the criteria here. You would click create alert. And and that's that and you'd be all set. And any, so if you want it to be alerted based on water level, let's say your stage had. Water level like Bronx, let's say it had water level, it had discharge and it had multiple water quality parameters. If you want it to be alerted for multiple things, you'd have to set up a water alert for each parameter you're impressed with. But again, the process is similar. So so we'll come back to the water alert thing when when we start looking at some of the site specific things. That may be of interest. So these are the gauges. When I, when I met with with Jerry and other folks. Uh, at the Village a couple of months ago now, I think, uh, we talked about gauges that might be of interest for. Flood monitoring and these are the sites that were chosen. So we have Mamaroneck at the Mamaroneck Dam up here. We have Beaver Swamp Brook, which is behind the the Rynek High School. We have Shell Drake at Fenimore, which I believe that's village property at the, at the, at the DPW facility. And then we have a Mamaroneck River at Mamaroneck. And I forget the road that this is on, but it's um. We can zoom in and and take a look at that. Uh, but nonetheless, we have four gauges that have been selected. Uh, and whenever we install a gauge on anybody's property, whether it's private property or village or city or federal property, we always try to. We have to secure permission to install. And so in anticipation of this being approved, we've gone through and we started the permission process. And right now we have permission secured. At three of the four sites. Um, we don't have permission yet at Mamaroneck River at Mamaroneck. But we're working on that and hopefully we'll have permission for that soon to install. We do have all the equipment in house uh, ready to go and ready to install should this be approved. So. Uh, if we get the green light on this, three out of the four of these could be installed in fairly short order.
So when you say that you could get an alert, uh, you said every hour, every hour, every day. Can you get it to fifteen minutes?
Uh, I think the, yeah, I think the shortest timeframe, that's a great question. I think the shortest timeframe allowed is is hourly. Um, yeah, which is unfortunate. It would be nice to get a water alert. Quicker than that, but I think it's only hourly. And the reason for that is because typically we only transmit data. Hourly, right? If you, if you wanted to get a water alert every fifteen minutes. And yet we're not going to transmit data for an hour, it it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense to do that. So I think the reason that the hour. Is the the shortest timeframe is because that's typically how we transmit data. And you, and and we, we don't get data. In the database and on the web any sooner than an hour. Uh, having said that, for these sites here, we're talking about having fifteen minute transmits. Um, I I will have to look into it. I don't believe the option exists, though. I think it's only hour.
So, so Andy, before you proceed and and we have to. Well, you're, you're, you're oh, one, three, oh, one thousand.
Yes.
That is the landowner, the, the Metro North, is it the MTA?
This is um, the, I I I can pull up a Google Earth map.
We can, we can do that tomorrow. We can do that offline because.
Okay.
It's going to take an act of God to get them to give you permission.
Okay, yeah, this is, so two of these, um, let me take a step back. This site here, oh, one thirty, one thousand, we used to have. Uh, so if you remember the whole crest age gauge with the stick and the cork, we have been funded in the past and and several of our sites, um. Some of our cooperators are only interested in the annual peak stage and the annual peak discharge. That's the only piece of information they want from a gauge. And so this gauge here, uh, we used to have, it was what we call a CSG only or a peak stage only gauge. And so we formerly had a crest age gauge here that measured. Just the annual peak stage and just the annual peak discharge. So that's where we're looking to reoccupy. We're looking to actually, so so we were at this location, we were about up, um, I'm guessing about fifty feet downstream of a bridge. Uh, and the 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 private landowner there is hesitant to to let us put any equipment there, like a full blown gauging station. So we're looking to move up towards the bridge and we're working with property owners there. And and so so Jerry, you and I can talk about that afterwards. If there's any, yeah, any way we can.
And I apologize. I want the board of trustees to ask as many questions as they want. I just needed to bring that up before I forgot.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, please do. Thank you. I appreciate that. So going back to Water Alert, um, these are things that, you know, again, the USGS doesn't determine the threshold that's set, the user determines that. But some things that may be of interest, I just picked two sites here. For, for example, the Mamaroneck Dam. Uh, if 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 this gets approved and we install this gauge, this would be the gauge house itself and the sensor. Would be located probably, I'm guessing seventy-five feet upstream of this dam. So you as a a user or you as someone maybe monitoring flooding conditions may be interested in different water levels. For example, you may be interested in when these openings in the dam are 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 overtopped. You may be interested in the elevation of the top of the dam or maybe the top of the flashboards. Or maybe you'd be interested in when the water level gets two feet before it overtops the dam. So there's a whole bunch of different things you can look at. Uh, Shell Drake River, this is the one that would be installed in this vicinity. Uh, at on village property behind the, I'll call it the DPW facility. You may be interested here.
Salt shit.
There you go. Okay, the salt shed, yep. You may be interested here. And again, this is something that needs to be determined. But you may be interested in the top of the bank where water overtops the bank. Uh, if if this gauge gets installed, the water level sensor would be somewhere up in this area. And you may be interested in when water overtops the bank. And if we look downstream from here. That's, this is the bridge downstream from there. You may be interested in when water hits the low concrete here. Or maybe a foot or two before it hits the concrete. So these are all things you can think about when trying to figure out what. Water alert to establish. If if you're to use the water alert program, it's certainly not mandatory. But it may be of interest and these are some of the things you may consider. Um, now normally when we, when we install a gauge, we don't necessarily survey all these. Elevations here, but if there's interest and you guys are, if you say, geez, Andy, you know, the top of the dam. You you probably have an elevation of that, but maybe, maybe you don't have an elevation of the top of the gate openings. And if you want that. That's something we could incorporate into the installation so that you could use that or or some variation of that to determine. A water alert threshold that might be of interest. You know, we could shoot with a survey gun, the underside of the concrete of the bridge. And again, you can determine if that's an elevation you want to use or 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 not. Uh, so so these are all things that that can be determined. You know, but these are just two examples of the sites. I don't have pictures of the other sites here. Um, but things to think about. And and again, we can talk more about Water Alert if you want to. We can talk more about the real time data, but just to show a map of where our current gauges are. Throughout the state. This is just a a Google Earth screen capture of.
You have some questions that are very specific.
Yeah, yeah, please, yes.
The the primary purpose of this is as an early warning system.
Mm-hmm.
All, all the other information, which is desirable and helpful for, you know, for cataloging and in the future planning. It's interesting and helpful, but doesn't get to the core of how this comes up as terms of the early warning system. So there are several questions I have. First of all, you're saying that you will get, you get multiple, if I understand you correctly, you get multiple alerts. But only once an hour. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I I can, I can talk to our national folks and see if that's customizable at anything less than an hour, but I. At at this time, I don't believe it is. I think that's correct.
A situation like either, that would be of no doubt. Because by the time the second, you know, the the second hour change, you're already, you're already flooded.
Well, one, one thing, one thing.
So the question, let me finish it by that.
I'm sorry. Yep, I'm sorry.
The question really is how to, how this could be set up in a way. That you, that goes to more than one water level. So let's assume for the sake of discussion, we say. Uh, we want to know if it gets to X, which is, you know, a concern. But if it gets to X, if it gets to Y. You know, that's a high probability of flooding in the village. And still gives us, you know, some time to, you know, seek uh, approaches. The question is, can this system be worked rigged either, you know, through the di- different? We have four gauges. The question is, can you get a four different alerts from the four different gauges? Because then you could set one for, you know, one hour and one, you know, an hour and ten minutes and nothing else. You know, so because it's. You know, that, that would be one way of doing it if it could be done. I don't know. This is your system, not ours.
Yep, yep.
Can I, can I just uh, to? Add to what the trustee is saying. Do you usually set these this close to each other?
Uh, you're talking physical gauge installation location?
Because in some places you're less than half a mile.
Yeah, um, it all depends on user need. So these are sites that when I, when I met with the village, these are sites that were selected by several folks as far as. Sort of the, maybe the pinch points or the, or the areas of most concern. So. Um, you know, it it's, it's based on user need and and cooperative need. So if there's a need for these in those locations, that's why, that's why I went and. And selected these along with the the village folks, yeah.
Uh, Dan, did he answer your question? I'm sorry, I jumped in there.
Well, no, he hasn't answered my question.
Yeah, so as far, as far as water alerts, you should be able to set up multiple water alerts. So for example, if you set up a water alert for five feet. Um, you could also set up another water alert for five point five feet. Uh, if you want to know when that five, waste five feet is exceeded.
So the next, to follow up to that is. If you're saying that every individual, we have uh, you know, twenty thousand people. Let's say ten thousand of them want to. Okay, four thousand, I don't care. You're saying each one of them has to set up all these parameters individually? Or can it be set up, can the village set up a global? And if they, and give the option to those who want to be more specific, you know, and set their own uh, to do so. Or is it, you know, is it one for, is it one setting for everybody? Or is it? You know, and if so, the village should be doing that. Uh, as opposed to every individual, you know, model. I mean, I know on off and sledgehammer when it comes to, you know, phones. Uh, and that you would want, you know, more of a phone alert than a email alert. Uh, you know, unless the email goes to your phone.
Mm-hmm.
It's the whole concept of this is an early warning system. And I, I understand the information gathering, which is the question is how to. Manipulate it to be a real early warning system.
Right.
In real time, not, not, uh, you know. Hours away from each other.
If I can expand on what Dan is saying there, Andrew, um, so Lou Young.
Sure.
I I think what we need is, uh, once we get an alert to be able to. Um, uh, contact these gauges and find out what's happening at these different locations in real time. Is that, is that doable?
Uh, the way these gauges are set up, there are some sites that have um. Different telemetry systems. So this, this system in this gauge is a goes transmitter. So it's a satellite transmitter. So it's one way communication. We, there's no way for you to dial in or call in or connect to the gauge. Uh, so it's it's one way communication from the gauge to the the web, basically to our, our network. Um, so I'm not sure if that answers your question on that, but as far as the water alert goes, the alerts are specific to. The, the login ID and password, right? So if I, so for example, we could look at the same gauge. And and I may be interested in a water level of five feet. And the, and you as someone with the village may be interested in the water level of four feet. Well, it's going to send me a water alert when, according to my username and ID that I plugged in there at at my user defined threshold. And it's going to do the same thing for you at your user defined threshold. So it's. It is all dependent on the login that's used to to get the alert. Um, so if if you as, let's say the village wanted to make some sort of um, warning known to the, to the, to the village. Uh, you, you know, you could collect a water alert at a certain water level. And then, uh, you know, I I think, I think someone maybe on the board had spoken with someone else in my office, named Gary Wall. Uh, he and I have been talking about this too. Uh, he and I have been talking about this too, and there's a possibility, you know, this is not something the USGS does. But it's a possibility that you could set up some sort of reverse nine-one-one system. And again, that's, that's not something that the USGS has their hand in, but it's something that could be considered. Um, and if that could be implemented, maybe it could be used that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the, the gaps in the information. Once we have an emergency, we're going to need real time, moment to moment. Um, information on what's happening in those rivers. Uh, you can't, you can't wait fifteen minutes or, or an hour. Everything could change in, in a few minutes.
Sure.
I mean, I can tell you this from the years I've been here, and there's people in a room that could testify to this and this multiple firemen. Uh, and police officers who have seen it over here. Once the dam is topped, you got about fifteen minutes before Washington Falls floods. So, I mean, I, I, I. So I, I guess, you know, my, 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 I, this, this, there's a lot of bells, buzzes and whistles. And I, I, I don't know if they're needed and if we just need, you know, like a, like a couple of, uh, you know, markers here that, you know, this, you know, at, at such, at such and such a rate. You know, you got twenty minutes, thirty minutes before the, uh, you know, we, we usually station the fire, uh, department member there and he gives us, you know, a visual on, uh, you know, how far it is above the top of the dam with Tony Acquavelli or somebody like that. And, you know, you could hear on the radio, once, once it goes over the top of the dam.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, you know, the party's over. So I, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hmm, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um. The, the one thing that's difficult is what you're describing is a rate of change, right? So our water alert doesn't do a rate of change. It just gives you water level exceeding a threshold. So for example, if you look at, you know, obviously the, the magnitude of flooding is highly dependent on the intensity of the rainfall. So if you have a three-inch rainfall in four hours or a three-inch rainfall over four days, the, the effect on the rivers could be dramatically different, right? Where, where a high intensity, short duration rainfall is going to create a, a really sharp rise and a sharp spike in the peak. So it, it is very different and the water alert does not accommodate a rain, a rate of change, uh, notification. That would be nice if it did. One thing that we can do and we have done is, and again, this is, this is something that, that is more of a visual from looking at the web. But we can put, um, lines, so you, you can set up this whole water alert thing. But we can also put, uh, something on the web that appears, for example, in this, in this picture right here. Uh, if we knew the elevation, uh, of the bottom of this bridge, let's say. We could put an indicator on the web so that as the water's rising, a line would appear on the plot that shows, you know, low steel or low concrete of the bridge. And you could see based on, on the intensity of the rise, if it's a really sharp rise or more of a broad rise, you can see if it's anticipated to hit this. Um, but the intensity of the storm has a lot to play. You know, for example, a, 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 again, a water alert of five feet may mean something if you have a high intensity storm. But it may not be quite as critical if you have a low intensity storm, you know what I mean? As far as stretched out over three days.
Okay. Can you continue with the, do you have more presentation?
Uh, just a couple more slides and then, and then we can keep on with the questions. But, you know, I, I know, I think Jerry had mentioned there was some interest in the, the breadth of the gauging network in New York. So nationally, there's about eight thousand gauges. In New York, we have about three hundred gauges that measure water level and flow. We also have these peak stage and flow gauges. We have lakes and reservoirs, tide gauges, groundwater wells, et cetera. So you can see here, uh, that we have hundreds of gauges across the state. So I know there was a question about, about other gauges that other agents, not other agencies, but other entities, um, fund other, other municipalities, et cetera. So this is the, the breadth of the network here in New York. There are gauges that aren't plotted on here, but this is the vast majority of them. And then, and then, yep, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, and, and you install gauges only, uh, uh, on request, uh, when they're funded by somebody?
Generally, yes. So we do have, um, the answer to the question is yes with an asterisk. So generally we install gauges when there's a customer need for some reason. Um, we also installed, so the federal government has what they call a federal priority stream gauge network. Uh, and there are certain criteria that a location would need to meet or a stream gauge site would need to meet in order to, uh, be applicable uh, to this federal priority stream gauge network. And then we get federal funding to install those gauges. But by and large, the gauges that we have are funded by independent, we call them cooperators, yeah. Yep. And then, and I think this may be close to the last slide. This is the network of gauges throughout the country. And I was going to show you this website because if you're interested in other gauges that are nearby, you can go to this website. This is a, a mapper of all the gauges in, in the, in the country. And you can look at sites that are active sites, or you can look at sites that are inactive sites, meaning they have some sort of data, but they're no longer funded to be operational. And so this is what it looks like. And, and I believe the last slide is this one here. So we're of course looking at Mamaronek. And you can see anywhere that there's a stickum, there are other gauges nearby. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily that it's a water level gauge or a discharge gauge. It could be that there are water quality samples at gauges from twenty years ago. It could, actually, these are all active gauges. So there, there is some sort of recent data at all these gauges. It doesn't mean water level and discharge. Like I said, it could mean that there was a, uh, an independent water quality sample taken. But a- anyway, in the mapper, if you go to that map, where you can click on any one of these and you can see what data are available. So there were some, again, there were some questions or I thought there were, might be some questions about other, other gauges that we have in the network nearby.
Yeah, a part of, Andrew, part of that was the, the interest in to see, uh, immediately upriver from us, upriver both rivers.
Yep.
If there were any gauges that we could, um, um, utilize and monitor, you know, and, and assist us in, in, uh, the, you know, the, the, on, the, the onset of, of flooding.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't look like there's much, except for the Portchester, Rybrook area, right along Connecticut, NY line and one in East Chester, maybe.
I, I, I bet those aren't flood gauges.
I don't know.
Yeah, they, they very well may not be. And again, this is a screen capture, so I can't, I can't click on this. But if you go to that website, you can click on any one of these and see what data are available. And, and it, it's, it's very variable. It's very variable as far as what data are collected for, at a certain location or for what purpose.
But there's a lot in Jersey, right, right over, right over, yeah, wow.
Yep. Again, some of those might be riverine gauges. Some of those may be water quality samples. Some of those may be lake gauges. It all, it all depends. If you click, if you go to the link and you click the little icon here, you can find more information.
Okay.
So, yes.
I have my, uh, super cell phone. Do I have to log in every time I want to get to see what, get an alert? Or do I log in, want to set my parameters and it automatically, you know, send me information?
The, the answer is you do not need to log in every time. Once you're logged in, you would stay logged in. But once you're logged in, as long as that threshold is, is set up and, and active, you'll get a notification every time. And, and if for some reason you didn't want to be, you wanted to keep the threshold in place, but for some reason you, you know, over this month, you're going to be away and you don't want to be, you don't want to be alerted, you can shut that notification off, uh, for a certain, there's like a little toggle where you can turn the notification on and off. But on, once you're logged in, it will continually send the updates as long as, as long as the water alert's active.
Okay. Anything else?
Not from my end, no. Are there any other questions?
Other questions? I think I've got a good picture of what, what is, what they're offering.
Okay, thanks.
Just, just to, to complete, to get the full picture, um, on, on the cost, on the, how is this structured? Very simple because we got some backup, but so there was, there were questions, uh, on, on essentially the property. This, this devices are your property. How long does it take? How long is the contract for? How many units? Just, just very basic, the breakdown.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the funding in front of me, but I can give you an idea. So we, so each, the funding that was, the funding agreement that was submitted was for all four gauges. Actually, the initial funding agreement was for three gauges because that's all that was needed at the time. But once we did some site visits, it was determined that a fourth gauge would be beneficial. So we, we, the initial agreement that we submitted was for the installation uh, of three gauges and the operation and maintenance of those gauges for five years. Uh, the, we submitted an amendment, um, and that amendment was for the fourth gauge for installation and operation and maintenance for five years. Does that, does that answer your question or do you need more specifics than that?
Enough for now. Thank you.
Okay, yep, sure.
Thank you. Andrew, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Glad to be part of it. Thank you. Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
Yeah, we, we also, uh, have information, I think, from the, uh, the head of the, uh, flood mitigation advisor committee about some research he's done about flood, uh, gauges, uh, exclusive of this. Jerry, do you, do you know what I'm talking about?
I saw some stuff, um, mayor from Tony. But I didn't, I didn't look into it. Um, I didn't have time to look into it.
Neither did I.
There was some information that he provided as far as alternatives. But what, what I've learned from, from Andrew's presentation is the, I think the board may want to really focus and, and hone in on the frequency of the reporting, if there's anything out there on the market like that. So.
Because our intervals doesn't really cut it here.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and if we set up gauges and we set up parameters where, you know, we know that we're getting into a dangerous area, maybe that should be communicated to the public as opposed to having the public, um, work online or work on, in a web-based platform where they set up their own heights or, or parameters. So I think I have to look at that more than anything else. And that's why I needed Andrew's, because we never got into the, the real deep dive with Andrew.
No, we haven't. Would, would this be something that we do an RFP for?
Yeah, potentially, potentially we'd have to do, uh, because of the cost. I mean, you know, we can probably, um, we can probably look at that kind of, uh, of, uh, use that scope to try to see if anyone would respond to what we're asking them to do. That would be.
What we're looking for may cost more than, than what they're trying to, but, but.
You know, we don't know.
Think this is it.
Yeah, I, I'd rather, I'd, I'd pay more for something that works.
Yeah, something that, that, that can give us what we want. So I think it may be beneficial for the, uh, for us to look into what potentially would be more along the lines of, of those, uh, of, of those features. Let's put it that way.
We, we need something that gives us immediacy.
Have you explored with USGS whether they know of a system that does this, even if they don't?
I haven't. I haven't explored. I can ask. Of course, I'm going to have to talk to Andy at some point, based on what the board's directed, directive is, uh, to me. But, um, I have none, and I, and I can, of course, if you want me to, but I haven't.
He wasn't clear as to whether you can do it more than one hour.
I think he was. I think he said, I think he was really clear about that.
He said he didn't think so, but you have to check.
Um, I, I, I would hope that we could put out an RFP for this and get something.
We want reporting, we're frequent, right? Fifteen minute reporting intervals.
No, I'd like immediacy. I'd, I'd like to be able to, if, if we.
Dial it up and see what the, how deep the water is at the dam right now.
If we own the equipment, right, then, you know, the fire chiefs and the, the village manager and the police chief could all get, hey, you know, you got, and, and we could figure this out. You got twenty minutes. You got a half an hour. You got an hour before you're in real trouble.
But if the equipment only takes readings every so often, there, that, I, I think we have to find out a little bit more about what's available.
That, that, yes, that's exactly what we're talking about.
But, but before we structure an RFP.
It's, it's going to take a little bit more, um.
Yeah.
What, what's his name? You know, uh.
We'll see what Tony's.
Tony's, Tony's done some work and I'll, I'll send it to everybody if you didn't get it.
He has, but, but honestly, I can't, I can't, because I didn't look in real, real hard at what he said. I did review quickly.
No, neither did I. I sent this afternoon.
If it meets, if it meets that. No, I think he had something before that too, that he was kind of talking about, but I'm not sure.
The flood mitigation committee was going to talk about it, but their meeting was tonight, so they canceled their meeting. So I guess they don't meet for another month.
Tony, Tony said he might, he might be setting a meeting up next week.
Okay, it's, okay, it's not on the calendar yet.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I don't know what Tony said today, but a couple weeks ago, was a company that makes equipment. But they don't do it, they don't install it. You have to get, he said you'd have to get an engineer and you'd have to try and figure out what you want.
We need something similar to a security camera where you can dial in and take a look.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
All right. Sorry it took so long, but, you know, edit it, we checked before we went and did it.
Well, we're talking about big money, so we have to kind of.
Yeah, big money, yeah. All right. Uh, fair and affordable housing. I don't think we have time to get through that tonight.
Yeah, well.
And I know, I understand where you put it on the agenda.
And I, um, I just briefly, I think it's, I think it's something that should be included and I'm sure it is going to be included in the county plan.
Yeah.
And I had followed up with West Ham, so we can talk for that in two weeks. But we, um, but we do have people, I think, who are here to talk about the dog park.
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
Yeah, I think that's what we should be doing.
Uh, no, we're here to talk about the dog park. This is, this is the board of trustees work session. Uh, wetlands war, that's for October eleventh. Next up is the dog park. We, we have a proposal for a dog park that's currently located next to the, uh, sewage treatment plant. Uh, if you're looking at the sewage treatment plant to the right of it, uh, that is in front of the Harbor Coaster Zone Management Commission right now. Uh, the rec commission, I believe in the dog park, uh.
Was it, it's, it's a subcommittee.
Subcommittee, yeah. I mean, yeah, no, no, I got it. Thank you for clarification. And the dog park subcommittee have now recommended, uh, over on, uh, thank you. I'm losing it tonight. Over on Rushmore Avenue, uh, putting it over there. Okay. I, I can give you my view of this. Rushmore Avenue is an area that has always been kind of kept in harbor and park for passive recreation. It's where people can go and walk, sit in a bench, uh, and have quiet time. You know, the county spent a lot of money a few years ago to restore the wetlands, uh, on the, uh, with, with the seawall ends and going down to the end of the harbor round property. It's actually an ex-mayor of the village of Mamaronek who got the county to do that when he worked for the county, Bob Funicello. And, you know, that, that's, it's a critical environmental area. Now, we also don't have utilities there. We don't have electricity. We don't have water. I spent a couple of years as chairman of the coastal zone management commission. I was before as the harbor coastal zone management commission. And I would say I was a pretty liberal chairman. And I would have a hard time giving this a consistency recommendation based upon where it is, based upon the fact that that area floods all the way up to Rushmore Avenue, probably at once or twice a year. Uh, so, and I, while I understand the reasoning that the, uh, rec board and the dog, uh, subcommittee had for moving it, uh, where we originally planned to put it is just an area where sometimes, you know, kids work out a little bit. It's not a field. Uh, and it, it probably never was going to be a field. But, you know, as far as disturbing other people who are playing, you know, we could regulate the hours at the dog park too. Uh, you know, maybe on Saturday and Sunday mornings, not have it, uh, as available, uh, when there's more kids down there. But I've been doing this a long time and there are issues and problems with every every area that you, you, you want to play something, you know, uh, twenty-one years ago. Uh, we put the spray ground down on the beach in Harbor Brown Park. And it was a, a big cacophony. And, uh, a lot of people didn't want it on the beach, although it seemed to me a natural place to have this playground. Uh, people wanted it by the playground. Uh, people wanted it at Stanley Avenue Park. So I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, no matter where you try and cite something, there are always going to be difficulties. There are always going to be, uh, issues and where it's being cited now might not be the perfect spot, but there isn't a perfect spot in my, in my view. So, you know, and and we've we've gotten a lot of correspondence, both pro and con. We've got a lot of correspondence. We got a letter from the Orient to Point Association about this, too. And that part of the park, that little playground that's down there now, the Little Kitty Playground, that was put in because Oriented doesn't have a neighborhood park. You know, the, the, just let me go through this. There are neighborhood parks and there are community parks. Stanley Avenue is a neighborhood park. Florence is a neighborhood park. Columbus is a neighborhood park. Uh, neighborhood parks don't have bathrooms. Uh, Harbor Island is a community park. It's the only park that is, uh, it's the only park that's, you know, for the whole community. So that 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 area of Rushmore, the the folks on that side of the community always looked at that as, you know, that little playground as, you know, the the one little playground that they have. Besides the ones they have in their backyard. So I I have a hard time now moving that to that area for a multitude of reasons, but I I think we'd have a really, really hard time getting a consistency determination in the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission. That's, that's my view of this. I'm open to listening to the rest of the board.
Oh, I I I think what this is, is is opposition to the Dog Park, uh, as it was originally suggested. We we got our recommendation from Parks and Rec. Um, the board what, you know, took it, and we're we're right at the end now, and I think people who don't want a dog park um, uh, went to the Parks and Rec Committee instead of coming to us. And and I think that the ship has sailed.
Sure you that that's not what happened.
No, okay.
Yeah, that's not what happens.
Let's just state it here. So in any event, I I just think it's it's a matter of whether we're going to have a dog park there or not. I mean, because if you, if you start reciting it, you 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 you're telling people, we're not going to have a dog park for a couple of more years. That's it. So we're, you know, we're at that point now. We either do it or we don't.
Well, I think that's a little black and white. Um, and and I I think we really should hear from the members of the Park and Recs Committee who are also from the Ad-Hoc Dog Park Committee. And I don't really want to speak for them, but what I will say is that we're the whole, the reason, I mean, we're waiting now for the village to prepare documentation so HCZM can do its consistency determination. And that hasn't happened yet, so we're waiting on that. So that is, you know, and we also know that no matter when we get an approval, there's a supply chain issue. So the dog park isn't going to be built till the spring. So I don't think that changing the location is necessarily a showstopper. Um, and I, and I'm not suggesting, I mean, I think the Rushmore is a location is, I mean, I understand the appeal of the site versus the proposed site between the sewage treatment plant and the schoolhouse, but I think it's a much more complicated environmental lift, and I don't think HCZM can can find it consistent. I think there's just enough other problems with the site that it's not practical. Um, there have been other sites looked at, and I actually think that we maybe should be thinking about the Greenhaven site, um, the Greenhaven Lane site, which
You're in a tail.
No. Greenhaven Lane, right behind me. Near Taylor's Lane, but it's not the Taylor Lane. It's not that, it's not that, it's not the Taylor's Lane.
It's all the far west end of the village.
Well, you know, I mean, I'll tell you that, and I I mean, I really think that this, that Tina and and Tina Mareska and Carrie Sergio are here from Parks and the Parks and Rec and the Ad-Hoc Committee. Um, and I think that they can talk about it, that I think this site was picked because they thought it would be up and running by May twenty twenty-one. And that was really, it wasn't the preferred site. It was just the expedient site. It certainly hasn't been expedient, and sometimes things happen for a reason. And, you know, this is, this is a big endeavor for the village. It's an important endeavor for the village. And I think we have to really get this right, and, you know, I mean, we are not a community that has, our one big park is Harbor Island Park, and it's a very, very busy park. And it's on the water, so it has, you know, it's a sensitive environmental area. The Harrison Dog Park and the Portchester Dog Park, which are the two most proximate to us, are simply able, they're located at a park that, um, at parks that were large enough to accommodate it. We simply don't have another park that can accommodate it the way those two parks can. So I I really kind of would like to hear, I would like to hear.
Please, the, and the, don't leave out, Ry has one over by the beach also.
They don't actually have a dog park. They allow dogs. Yeah, but that's not, well, that happens at Rush, right now in Rushmore, so it's a different look.
Okay, please, Carrie. I've seen, I'm sorry. I knew that.
Same personality, different color hair. I'm Tina Mareska, I'm the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Commission. And I sat on the Dog Park Committee. Um, I just want to clarify. We all, even everybody that wasn't on the Dog Park Committee, want to see a Dog Park as quickly as possible. And we started this before the flooding and COVID. So we kind of got slowed down because of that. And I'm thinking about things now. Number one, I felt, I feel like the Dog Park Committee should be expanded. It's not. There's three members from the Rec, Parks and Rec, and then there's two community members. I would love to see additional community members put on the the Dog Park Committee, because I think that, like, in these last, in this past weekend, when everybody saw what was being proposed, we were able to talk to a lot of people, and Carrie can speak to it as well, um, that I think would be so beneficial to have their input as well and things that we hadn't thought of. But we don't think that if we reconvened and added a few members, we feel like we could do it quickly. And that we could, by January, have it to the HCZM with a better location after you guys look at it and approve it. I don't think that it would take long, because we are all eager to get this done. And we kind of settled for better sake of words on the location next to the sewage treatment plant. Because we were made to believe that this was going to be the location that would be the quickest and easiest. So although we took a lot of time to look around and try to find spots, we're not familiar with every spot in the village. So there's places that weren't brought to our attention that now have been that we could have looked at and could have investigated. So I just feel like we need additional members and we need one more chance just to kind of find, no place is going to be perfect, but I think having it in the middle of all these kids playing soccer and baseball is not a good place. And I don't know if you saw Dan Margotius's email he sent at four o'clock this afternoon. He is on the board of LMFC, the soccer league. I am as well. And I had originally spoken to them and gotten their okay that they would not mind if we took away that piece of grass, but now with the Parks Department going to be redoing little by little, the fields at the harbor, which are like long, long, long overdue. Um, they're going to be closing down section at a time, so they're going to be losing field space. And I think that was part of where they were going to move them.
Quick question, this, this soccer organization, is it's a village organization or?
It is.
A private organization?
It, well, Dan, so Dan Margotius, who sent you the email, he runs our recreation program for the soccer league, which are all village residents, all village residents. And I would, I would say probably eighty percent of them are low-income families in the village. That really need to be out there playing soccer, and LMFC provides them with so much. They give so many scholarships and help these kids because it's like their only opportunity, and that's really the cheapest option of any kind of sport in our community.
So Tina, to be clear, you're asking for a little bit more. To expand the committee, you have people whom you want applying to suggest be on that committee?
Well, so I think that was, in my opinion, part of the problem. I don't know how normally you guys go about putting together an ad hoc committee, but like I didn't see it publicized, so I don't know how the committee members came about. I know normally, since it's an ad hoc committee from the Rec Commission, that's why I'm on it, that's why Carrie's on it, and, um, Cindy. So that part I know, but I don't know how the community piece comes into play. So like, I didn't see it advertised, like maybe if somebody had known, they would say, oh, I would love to help investigate Dog Park.
So what I'm hearing is that you're not married to Rushmore.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. We knew there was going to be trouble, but we were just trying to think with a clear mind and not, we knew that every location had a downfall.
Sure.
But we, you know, everything aside, that's how we were trying to look at it. We were trying to look at what in a world, what the perfect place is.
So in in essence, we're, we got second, second thoughts, coal feed about the.
I mean, I didn't see all of the emails that you guys saw, but I did see a lot of them.
Yeah.
And they're all valid concerns.
Yeah.
And I, at this point, would say, no, I don't want it at Rushmore, but I also don't want it next to the treatment plant.
Okay, so essentially, we don't want it next to, they're saying they don't want it next to the treatment plant, that's.
And more people.
Correct.
And to the village to advertise it and.
Yes, but I would say it needs to be done quickly.
Jerry.
Do you want to see it happen?
Jerry? Uh, before, before we go down a road again, we need parameters of what is needed to provide a dog park. What 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 do we have to provide?
The parameters that we were going with next to the the details of the dog park next to the sewer plant uh, was a fenced-in area approximately one acre, cut in a portion or provided in a portion where a there would be a small dog park and then a larger dog park side by side. There would be ample parking, which is behind the sewer plant as soon as we get our contractors out of here and we reclaim all of that. And there would be water, uh, which was requested to kind of wash down the dogs if their paws were muddy before they get back into the SUVs. Those kinds of things. That's what we were looking for.
So so you would need parking?
Parking. Utility, not necessarily electric, but we'd need some kind of water source.
Well, if we're going to use a key fob system like you suggested, Jerry, we would need Wi-Fi and electricity.
No, no, they're battery operated, Tina. They're battery operated with, uh, one of those lithium batteries, so.
Okay, so.
I have, I have experience in that.
Parking, water source, do you do you need a concrete pad?
We need concrete pads because we need to wash down the dogs on a concrete pad. And then there would be, um.
What, what, wait, just let me finish my questions. Wha- wha- how much area do we need to have it? Because you've done dog parks before.
I built a two and a half acre dog park. An acre would suffice. But anything smaller than an acre, it's on top of each other. Everything's on top of each other.
So at least an acre.
Another question, Jerry. If if we were to send the the environmental stuff for that location, um, let's say over to HCZMC um, after the, you hire the engineer and you went forward with that location, when could you, uh, when when could it be built? Is it, is there a delay? Or would you be able to get it up, uh, before the end of the year?
Before the end of the year?
Yeah. No. I don't know, I'm asking.
So so one thing.
How quickly could you do it?
The Harbor Coastal hasn't met in in many months. It continues to cancel meetings, so I have no idea. I really wasn't in favor of going to Harbor Coastal, just basically building, putting up the fence and creating a dog park. But if the board absolutely insists that we go to Harbor Coastal, you can add six months to this, to this.
If you, if you're in a park that isn't by the water, you don't have to go to Harbor Coastal.
Right, so, so.
That parking lot, when is that parking lot going to empty? That parking lot is a dangerous disaster.
All right.
Especially with all the kids that are down there.
Let me simplify that. If you started now, how how soon could you have a dog park there?
With Harbor Coastal without.
Without.
I need a month to get the fence in, once the site is approved, and I need another month to install it.
If it gets too cold, can you install the fencing?
Yes, I've done, I did the dog park in the wintertime when I built it last time.
So it 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 could be up in a matter of months.
Our wintertime is the best time.
Can I ask, can I ask a question also that we didn't get to ask about this location? How does flooding with that, this location, is that floods also, right?
No, no, up there.
When it's gas flooding.
When Superstorm Sandy comes back around, it may flood, but that's it.
I I would just like to talk to our village attorney. I I think HCZMC is not optional. This is, this is not, this is an unlisted action under SEACR. It's not on the type-two list. So when it's an unlisted action, I mean, we have a few other parameters of exemptions in our code. It has to go to Harbor and Coastal Management Commission. It's just part of the environmental review. Right? I don't know how we just.
Let me, let me rephrase it. Is every time the village put up a fence, do we have to go to Harbor Coastal's on that?
We're not just putting up.
So provided that I can.
Go ahead, Bob.
Having looked at the HCZMC parameters.
I have.
Let's see if it requires a consistency, consistency. Determination would be made by this board. But it requires advice from the HCZMC. Requiring a consistency determination, it requires advice from HCZMC.
Now, my, my problem with the, with with the requests from HCZMC was that it was going to cost us money to to do. But from what I understand, um, that you you can have the the new engineer do it when he comes on, right? Jerry?
I can, but Lou, I I've got, I've got serious projects that are, that the engineer has to work on. I can't, you know, first day out of the gate, put him on a dog park and then not worry about the order on consent, the save the sound and all the other stuff that we're dealing with. I I can't, I can't do that. I'm just being upfront and honest with you. I can't, I can't do that.
So what is it, what is the, what what that board is asking for, what what's it going to cost us?
We had an estimate from Keller Sessions of twenty thousand dollars to provide that information. Because we did ask it early on.
Twenty thousand dollars to do what? I'm sorry.
I'd have to resurrect it and read it to you, but I can send it to you.
It was permitting. It was more than what HCZM was requesting. It was a bigger.
It was everything. It was designed, it was planned, it was everything.
It was more than what HCZM was requesting.
And what's the total budget for, uh, complete, completion? Estimating?
The last, the last quote we received for the fence was forty-three thousand dollars. Uh, and we were going to install it ourselves. That's what.
Cost to that.
How long ago was that quote, if I may ask?
Uh, May, April, something like that. It may have, yeah. It may have. Budget, but I'm not sure if budget is, is the conversation here tonight. Are we afraid it's going to cost a lot of money?
No, that's not it. But look, let's, this is all about site right now. So you want to look at.
I'm not in the site business. You guys decide now.
Thanks, Jerry. Uh, thanks, thanks for the hot potato, Jerry.
Just up front, that's it.
Okay, so.
So.
Let me finish, please. So we need, just so we know what we're looking. We need a site that has parking. Possibly a convenient water source and an area to pour a concrete pad, and it has to be about an acre. So let's not get off the beam. That that, those are the things that we need.
Yeah, well, that's, those are the parameters that we're looking at.
I don't know if you guys looked at the map that, um, was attached. There's an area that is next to TD Bank. It's not, it's, it's not Taylor's Lane. It is, it backs up to Mango's Nursery.
Greenhaven.
Yeah, right, right. When you, right when you make the right in between TD Bank and Mango's. So that was the first place that we went to look.
That's wooded now, right?
And it's practically in rock.
And it's more, it's more than an acre.
Yeah.
Right, no, hasn't that been, uh, kind of used by somebody?
Yeah, Mango is using.
It's it's village property, but I thought that that was resolved.
Not resolved.
Not resolved, okay, thank you.
So that would require clearing, clearing trees.
Yes and no, though, because from what I've been hearing. Yes and no, though, because from what I've been hearing from the dog owners this past, these past four days. You would wanna keep some of, some, some of it, right? I mean, Carrie can speak to it more if you wanna allow her.
No, wha- why, why don't we do this? Why, why don't we get, ask for three more members for your committee? Cause you don't want more than that.
No, that's good. That sounds good.
And uh.
That gives you a total of nine, yeah.
And we, I mean, we would try to move as quickly as possible.
Yes, please do, cause it's, we need to have a dog park and the people have been waiting for years.
We understand that.
And they, and they, they thought it was gonna happen.
Yes, no, I.
Six months ago.
But I would rather see it happen the right way.
I, I understand that, but you're not the one that's gonna get the four thousand emails.
Oh, I did, don't worry.
No, no, you don't.
Not as many as you.
Believe me, yeah, you are.
But I just wanted to assure you all too that. We want to work with you and we want to do what's best for everyone, and we're not trying to cause trouble here or cause trouble. We're just trying to find. The best, quickest, but the best solution.
And, and Tina, I, I think it needs to be a place that people can get to easily. I mean, you know, it, it's not, uh, it's not a, it's not a, a toxic waste dump. They're dogs. And, and I know a lo- a number of children who own dogs.
Yes. But if you look at.
That are incompatible.
If you look at the dog parks in the other communities, they're not really centrally located in that community. They are.
Our community.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but you can't have everything at the harbor either, you know?
Okay, uh, we understand, uh, we, we'll, we'll ask for three more members. We have a long agenda that we have to get through before the meeting.
Jerry, Jerry, Sally, can we get, Jerry? Can we get this advertised ASAP for three, for three openings?
Sally?
I'm, I'm guessing people are watching tonight. We have about forty or more than that of people who've emailed us, and maybe we can put it in the newsletter Friday and.
Yeah.
We, you know, we can put it in the newsletter Friday, absolutely, sure.
Okay.
Interested in the dog parks, sign up.
And respond to all the people who actually.
I would also put a time limit of one week to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you could think fast, work hard, and dedicated, apply now. Pay zero. Benefits none.
You might get a few complaints.
Pay zero and worth every penny.
And be careful for what you wish for.
Yes. Alright, thank you, thank you, folks.
Just that we try to make sure that they are from. Different areas, not they're all concentrated in one place, because that's the point, is to try and get more people's input. That's my only comment at the moment.
Thank you.
That, that's a uh, something we, okay, uh.
Alright, we, we're gonna go to what's on for tonight. Uh, September twelfth, twenty twenty two, uh, requesting to Westchester County remove center of buttons on the Anita Blaine Bridge. Uh, that, that, and it's on for regular meetings. Everybody fine with having that on for a regular meeting? I'm fine with it.
I'm fine, I, I'm very fond of it. I'm very happy with it, but I would like to add one phrase at the end of the last of resolve.
Uh, so I know this is gonna get, okay, go ahead. What is it?
For consideration to be put on the next fiscal, on the next um, uh, fiscal budget. That's what they're reviewing now. They're setting up their budget for the next fiscal year.
So for consideration for the twenty, is it, would they be twenty twenty? Two.
They do, they do January, January.
So the tw-.
Twenty three.
Twenty twenty three budget.
Twenty three.
The first was off pause when the, the second thing, where says the Westchester County is putting this capital budget.
And just say.
In, in the twenty twenty three capital budget.
Yeah. That's good, yeah.
There you go.
Great.
Done. Uh, new business, uh, purchase of one. The, the, I'm just.
Get that for next time.
It's okay. It's enough people here that wanna do this. Uh, purchase uh of one F fifty XL Super Crew Box. Didn't we talk about this at the last meeting?
No.
There were a number of vehicles that we talked about last meeting that were Chevys. Uh, these, this. Well, sorry, um, there were, we talked about, uh, last meeting were several uh Chevys for public works. Uh, and other departments. Uh, this is in our capital budget that we have for a couple of years. Plans purchases for one vehicle for the marine education center to, especially to repair with the, after your. Talked about last meeting, we especially found the fish mobile. Uh, and um, a uh, a truck for the recreation department.
Thank you.
And just to be sure, this won't become another fish mobile, because the fish will be in the flatbed, not.
Correct.
That's, that's.
There will be some separation between.
Between fish and people.
Vehicle operator and the fish.
This, this is a shared vehicle or this is for the?
One each.
No, one each.
They currently share my vehicle.
One of the other things is that uh, the F one fifty's come equipped with generators. So especially with the marine education center, uh, in the event that there's a power outage, um, we can provide power to keep the tanks running. Same thing with the uh pavilion, uh, if it were to be ever used for.
Emergencies.
Emergencies, yeah. It does present an opportunity to keep those buildings running.
I, I, I understand the need and the desire, uh, but it seems to me that uh, there's gonna be a lot of downtime when it's not being used, and that seems to me. Raise the question, trying to have better coordination of the equipment that we have. So, you know, if you put a plow on it, for instance. You know, in the generator, you, you shared it with the, uh, the harbor manager, uh, it, uh, in the parks department and. You schedule it the better, uh, and coordinate better, uh, you don't have something sitting there, uh, that's very expensive. It just seems to me to be better to. You know, uh, to have more coordination as opposed to just more vehicles.
Well, yeah, I, I did include some backup uh from Kyle Troy from the marine education center about the locations where she's going. And this doesn't even include the number of. Uh, educational institutions that she's traveling to, uh.
We have a car for her right now.
We're replacing, this is to replace it.
This is gonna replace that for a more appropriate vehicle uh for the operation.
Right.
I believe we, you know, we're getting equipment heavy and we need to be better coordinated because there's downtime on lots of things that we have.
Okay, uh, I'm fine putting this off for tonight. I'm, buddy, is, is there consensus to put this off for tonight?
Nor?
I'm okay with putting it on, but we have delayed our, the, you know, I know we have capital budget, but it's just a list of, of what we're gonna spend. We have got to. Really figure out how we're gonna execute the capital budget. And um, because we're gonna get to a point where we're not gonna be able to fund something, whether or not it's in capital budget, because we've spent too much money. So I think we have to.
Okay, thank you.
Victor, you all right? Yes, uh, traffic and parking related matters on for September twenty seventh, very limited meeting, establishing a time parking on Old White Plains Road, establishing. A no standing restriction on Madison. This is what we talked about. We, we, we've just lowered the recommendation.
Yeah, correct. Your, my interpretation of the recommendation.
Yes.
Of the village board from the last meeting was to uh increase the length of the existing restriction. On.
Yes.
Madison by two spaces, which are another forty feet, and to change the parking on Old White Plains Road. To only allow fifteen minute parking.
For deliveries.
People, for deliveries, but also we have access to the business.
Yeah. That was Dan Nash's suggestion.
Good idea.
We have, right now, Madison, uh, sorry, White Plains Road has uh thirty minute parking. Unfortunately, that's what it is. That's what that, those signs are posted, and that's what it's been done by.
I, I'll check, but I, I didn't see that restriction in, in the code. That, you know, I, I checked the code before I prepared these resolutions. So we, it may be that, uh, unfortunately, like the existing sign on Madison. That's, it's in the field, but it's not the code.
Oh, okay.
So uh, it's, unfortunately, would not be the first time that.
That, that, yeah, scrutiny's earned.
So as we're installing these new signs, can we make sure that we can form it and take down signs that aren't accurate?
Yeah, and, and that, that's so important.
But if, if that's the case, then I would ask the traffic commission to look at whether we're on. The thirty minute parking for the rest of the street, you know, that's, that's what the signs are, and that's what it's supposed to be. Not that it's enforced, but that was the whole purpose of.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't understand. I just read the resolutions as I interpreted them.
So.
No, you, you interpreted correctly.
But I think, but I think, I think what, I think what Dan Nash is saying is that the traffic commission may have made a recommendation. Based on the assumption that the signs were correct, and if they're not correct, either they have to be, before they're removed, either, I mean, the traffic commission needs to. Factor that in. Did they think, did at some point did the traffic commission make the recommendation and signs got put up, but they never got voted on?
The, the original recommendation from the traffic mission was to eliminate parking around the perimeter of the park, which included. Two spaces on Old White Plains Road and.
Hundred and something feet, hundred and twenty feet on Madison.
But what I'm saying is that they may have thought that those thirty minute parking signs were enforced.
I don't remember that ever coming up.
Yeah, I, I, I don't.
So, I, I'm just, I think, I think they, we should maybe ask them to review that in addition to doing this.
So you just wanna talk about tonight, the Madison Street part and leave the old white.
I have a problem with resolutions that are proposed. What I'm saying is that if, what, you know, I thought that. Thirty minute party, you know, is what the village, you know, within the village code. You're saying then that it's not. So if it's not, then I'm, I'm asking that the traffic commission review that and determine whether or not it could be, you know, what to do with the rest of it.
Yeah, then we take the sidestep. Right, I mean, uh, but it's.
Can I approach as the traffic commissioner?
Just give us a second to talk about this, okay? This is our work session. I'll let you talk in a minute. You know, we, I, I, I think. What we talked about, what, what we're saying now is that there's no time restriction.
I, I didn't notice in the code. I didn't notice in the code. I'll, I'll look again.
Okay.
I, I didn't notice it.
Okay. That's, but this, this resolution's fine, alright.
Hold on, if you wanna talk, now you go to mic, but just, from now on, I'm gonna, I'll be pretty strict. This is, this is the board's work session. It's not, I don't go to your work sessions. And just, go ahead, go ahead. But it's, it's, it's just, it's just hard to get stuff done. Go ahead, go to the mic, go to the mic, go to the mic.
I'm more a body, a member of the traffic commission, and I, I'm approaching the, the dais as a member of the traffic commission to clarify.
Fair enough.
A sticky situation that we're having here. We're going in a stalling circle in regards to parking. This has come through three different boards with three different recommendations, all to establish a no parking. That we agreed upon, one no parking on Old White Plains Road, and two additional no parking on Madison Street. There is already an additional no parking from that corner on Madison and Old White Plains. I don't understand where the confusion came in, or where the no standing came in, or where any. Additional timed parking came in, because that really wasn't part of the recommendation whatsoever.
It wa- it wasn't. That's something that we changed, and that's, that's our prerogative too.
I understand, but you do have recommendations from the board requesting for two parts, because it's a dangerous situation as far as the parking and the traffic. We, as a traffic commission, have talked about several other locations within Washington, though, on that corridor, that are giving us the expressly same. Same concern and same issue, as far as being considered for no parking removal for safety and security as far as driving a pedestrian. This is an agreed upon, two additional spots and one spot on Old White Plains Road to open up that area, because that area becomes double and triple parked. There is a parking restriction on Old White Plains Road currently that is not enforced. Residential parking, however, was erroneously left off on Old White Plains Road and that one section of Madison Street. That is where the problem is entailed and lies, right there. So after mu- much ado, we came to the conclusion and agreeance to remove two additional spots and one on Matt, on Old White Plains Road. I, I can't see any other clarity than doing something in, in that nature to support what needs to be done. I mean, you have a dangerous issue. And you have pictures, you have backup, you have requests, you have different commi- committees that are asking for this for, for a reason. And if we ignore that reason, we were gonna ignore that reason on the next corner or the following corner that we asked, because there are several coming up. That are, we're gonna be in the same position. We're gonna be in the same position of having cars double and triple parked. That's the problem. Somebody is gonna get hurt, and that's not what was agreed upon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, schedule is so three twenty six ninety one of the village code is time limit parking. On Old White Plains Road, there are two restrictions that have been promulgated. The first is a sixty minute restriction from nine AM to five PM, Monday through Saturdays, except holidays, from Grant Street to Maranac. The second restriction is a fifteen minute restriction on the east side of the roadway. From a point twenty feet north of the crosswalk at the intersection of Maranac to a point twenty feet north thereof. So that's, those are the two restrictions on Old White, the time limit parking restrictions on Old Post Drive.
Old White Plains Road from a, uh, 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 from Maranac Avenue to Madison, a one hour restriction.
No, it's from Maranac Avenue to Grant. From Grant Street to Maranac Avenue.
On which side?
The east side.
The east side.
So if there's a thirty minute sign out there, that is not in conformance with the village code. And I understand there may be a sign there, but if it's not in the, if it's not correct, what's in the village code?
The code is what, the code is what governs, not the.
It's not enforceable.
So.
It's a sixty minutes.
And, and, and I, my question about that is, when the traffic commission made their recommendations, did they think parking was limited to thirty minutes? Or did they understand it was limited to sixty?
Okay, can I make a suggestion just so we can move on? Why don't we do tonight?
Madison?
Why don't we do Madison tonight? Send Old White Plains back to the uh, traffic commission. For reevaluation.
Okay.
Fair enough? Alrighty.
That makes sense to clarify.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense to me. At least we've got something done. Yeah, cool. Right, um, traffic, okay, but, I'm just gonna see, okay, we're not. You, we just go back to the top. Old business, that's on, because we're gonna deal with that in the future. Uh, wetlands, we're waiting for HCZM, dog park, we did. Okay, uh, Long Island Sound is gonna be on for the eleventh. I'm just gonna check all this. Commending April twenty fifth resolutions to provide funding for installation subscriptions for river gauges. Alright, we did that. Uh, requesting, we did that. September twelfth, lowering speed limits, we're gonna do on, Bob, you know about this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll give you a call on that too. Time restrictions, okay. That brings us, wow, new business C. Uh, traffic and parking related matters on for October eleventh. Okay. Dan, you wanna walk us through this?
Uh, sure, uh, four of the five, sorry, four of the five were discussed at either. Uh, the most recent traffic safety commi- commission meeting or the one before that. Uh, the no standing restriction on Old White Plains Road, uh, that would be to extend. Uh, where there is an existing no parking or, or, or existing restriction by the bakery to increase that by essentially one additional space in front of that. Um, uh, the no, the time.
You know, look, look. Look, do it, do it by the draft attachments. The first one is Palmer Avenue.
Yes, so Palmer Avenue, uh, I sent an email to the board. Uh, this was a, a restriction that was established several years ago. Uh, to facilitate with drop, some drop off and pickup activity.
Right.
The, uh, the reason why that was needed is no longer needed.
Right.
So I'm asking to have that rescinded.
Okay, this is a recent.
It's, it's to rescind that, uh.
Right. That was a family member who's no longer, yeah, yeah, okay, right, now I remember.
The no parking anytime restriction of Maranac Avenue, so on the other side of the bakery, uh, with the. Uh, recent repaving and restriping up of Maranac Avenue, the turning lane from Maranac Avenue to get to. Uh, uh, Old White Plains Road, I'm sorry, just talking about it, has been restricted somewhat. Um, I think the commission is actually fine with the, the current layout, but uh, what they asked for is because it could allow. But uh, what they asked for is because it could allow for some queuing in the roadway. To extend extended existing no parking restriction. All the way to the driveway that's adjacent to the building uh with the bakery. Uh, and this will allow for better queuing and uh to uh to make that turn from Maranick Avenue.
On Maranick Avenue, turning onto Old White Plains Road, that little cut.
Yeah.
To make him make.
Gotcha, gotcha.
My direction.
Gotcha, makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, the uh, no parking anytime restriction on Sher- Sherwood Avenue. Uh, this is a request that came in from a resident. Uh, there's a pretty significant bend in Sherwood Avenue. Uh, they've asked for a parking restriction at that bend. To allow for better sight visibility, the commission reviewed it and agreed with that. Uh, then the parking restriction on River Street.
So you're taking it on Sherwood, that's really like just one spot, right?
Yeah, really one spot. But it'll it'll clear up the uh, the it'll be at the curve where the curvature of the roadway is to make it easier for.
No, I know which way you're talking about. I got it.
Uh, then there's no parking restriction on River Street, uh, River is a pretty narrow roadway. Uh, it's at the end of First Street as you. Uh, the other side of North Ferry Avenue.
Oh, this is the way you used to?
No, he was. Sorry.
Second.
Okay.
Not skipping a jump.
Yeah. Uh, but it's a it's a pretty narrow roadway, uh, and uh, there's some driveways on. The east side of the roadway that if a car is parked opposite, their driveway, they can't pull out. So this would create a no parking restriction that would facilitate and allow people to get out there in and out of the driveway a lot easier.
We do that on Water Avenue one time too.
Uh, we've done it in a number of locations, I, it's possible. Yeah, a lot of these parking restrictions, they just blend into one after a while.
It is, so I'm 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 fine with all of it, does anybody have a problem?
On for two weeks.
On for, yeah, the eleven. Whatever that is, two weeks. Okay. No problems, alright, then that'll be on. On the agenda, you got that then?
Yes, sir.
Alright, excellent. At the next stop. Public Safety, Adam, access control system for Village Hall, the Regatta. Uh, Harbor Island Pavilion and Harbor, this is a FOB system?
Yep, FOB system.
You wanna explain it?
So, um, in assessing especially here at Village Hall, uh, with, um. Um, active shooter in mind. Uh, we know that, um, if they can't get through the doors, uh, we're protected if we shelter in place. We do have bulletproof glass at the um, at the clerks.
Can you speak up please?
We have, sure. You want me to speak up?
Yeah.
Sure, so in uh, in keeping with our active shooter in mind which came up recently, uh, in discussions. Uh, we're looking at Village Hall access control for key fobs. And then the Pavilion and the Harbor Master Office are two locations that we need to keep locked at all times. But staff needs to go in and out very fluently or fluidly. So, um, and the reason we keep, we need to keep them locked is because first of all, the Pavilion has children there in the afternoon, but also we collect.
Money.
A month, quite a bit of money, so. So we're looking to upgrade, um, our lock system so that staff is not impeded. But, uh, we still have that ultimate protection to make sure that no one else, no one unauthorized can come in.
And and the uh. The system that's now in place, uh, is antiquated and outdated?
Yeah, there really is no key FOB system, it's the uh, push button system here in Village Hall and there's nothing. At the Harbor Master or at the Pavilion, and we've already upgraded the police department, all offices there and the fire departments as well. So this is just expanding our public safety initiative.
Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns?
So when you do this, how does the public get any gain access?
They can come in the front door, but they can't come into our offices.
No, I'm talking about the Harbor Masters office and the uh, Arcs office.
Knocking on the door or clicking at the window.
Ringing a bell. You could put a bell on too, right?
Yeah, we can put a bell on, we could put a ring doorbell so we get their picture. We need to secure the location.
You know, trying to make more air, more area, certainly areas more secure.
Yep.
Uh, but you know, like you said with Village Hall, I mean, the the system we have there. Is basically, how how long have we been there, twenty five years, the system is twenty five years old, it's.
Not quite twenty five yet.
It's it's up there. Uh, you know, access control systems were the standard in the late nineteen nineties. It was, like I said, it was antiquated the day it was installed.
I told somebody.
Mayor.
What?
This will not be antiquated the day it's installed.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, good, I wanna make sure.
Glad we're ahead of the curve.
Uh, thank you, yeah, we're trying.
Told somebody about an elevator the other day, I said this was garbage when you bought it, you know, it's thirty years old. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
That's gonna be on the agenda for two weeks. Reimportant item, uh, senior citizen rent increase exemption, this is uh, something I asked to put on. Uh, raising eligibility, eligibility, uh. Has been the same forever, uh, this this it's uh, based upon your income, those with lower income, uh, get a uh. A uh. Discount. Uh, this is for the rent, and we're also doing it for looking at it for the property.
Well, the the, yeah, the way the.
Property taxes.
Well, the way that it works is, uh, for their rent stabilized apartments. Uh, if you're a senior citizen and you make uh, less than thirty five thousand dollars a year. And your rent equates to more than one third of your income. Uh, the property is eligible for an exemption, with that way it works is. They maintain the rent at a certain level and uh, the village will uh, pay to the property owner. What the difference would be on a monthly basis between the current rent and what a proposed rent would be. Uh, we have five people currently participating and expect to cost about seven thousand dollars a year.
And there's also a program now for. Property taxes and the same.
Um, well, there's always been a program for property taxes for property owners.
The property tax that they've raised, the the status raised the limit.
Yeah, that that's under a different section of the real property tax, the star, the enhanced star, uh, you know, things like that. Uh, but that is not this, that's.
Right, but 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 I also think we have to pass a law.
Uh, we do, and I think I think we we have.
Bob, do you know that one? Yeah, but we passed a law and the law is based upon a certain limit, the limit's been upped.
Yeah, I think it's maybe seventy five thousand now.
No, no, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah, it's it's in it's in the real property tax law.
Okay.
The 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 other question I had about this, uh, and this, we when we increased the rent, uh, the level back in. Uh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, uh. Another companion program to the senior citizen rent increase exemption, is it a similar program? For disabled individuals, and I don't know if that's something the board wants to consider. Um, you know, I I I would have no way of knowing how many people would be eligible for that.
Disabled individuals based upon a uh.
So it's seven. It'll be the same, uh, requirements as far as the income level and the. Uh, percent of rent that is being paid towards their income level, except if they instead of being sixty two, they have to verify that they're disabled to.
And have a household still, the same requirements.
Yeah, the same requirements except, you know, replace sixty two.
Alright.
Uh, so I don't know, that's something that the board wants to uh, consider or ask me to get more information.
Get more information?
Yeah, I think so, I would say, yeah.
As far as the income level, you know, the the maximum income level. That's allowed per New York state law is fifty thousand, uh, we're currently at thirty five thousand. Um, you know, we are higher than the town of Maranick and the village of Larchmont, but several other municipalities, uh, in Westchester. Are at that fifty thousand dollar level, so I don't know if the uh.
Yeah.
The board wants to uh, have a look or watch.
I'd sort of like to know what the different municipalities.
Uh, there's there's a chart in the back, there's a chart that's included with the back backup material.
Yeah.
Uh, showing what municipalities are, are what numbers, I believe the town of Mar- most. Uh, they're either at the, I think there's no one between. Maybe one municipality between us and the others that are fifty thousand. Um, there are several lower than us, including the town of Maranick, which I believe is twenty nine thousand. The village of Larchmont, which I think is eighteen thousand five hundred. Uh, Pleasantville, which is, I think it's like twelve thousand, uh, but uh, yeah, there's a chart in the back, I can uh. I refer it to see a second.
Team of Maranick, Pleasantville and Rye are low and Larchmont are lower than us, everyone else is higher.
We do have it in, thank you, Dan, all the backup from this section is excellent.
It's a bar chart.
Yeah, so. Yeah, lower than us is Larchmont, Rye, Maranick, Town of Pleasantville, so. Uh, if there was a uh, a curve, we'd be in the lower threshold of that curve. But uh, let's see, I think, uh, one, two, three. Uh, so we're at thirty five and we have Terry Towns at thirty seven five hundred. Greenberg, Irvington, Sleepy Hollow are forty thousand. Uh, Quorton, Dopsbury, Hastings, Navarone, and Ubershell, Austin Village, White Plains, and Yonkers are fifty thousand.
Alright, but but let's leave this on, so give us some more time.
Okay, and I'll I'll try and get some more information about the, they call jury.
The last is proposal to conduct an odor evaluation for the village transportation at thirteen thirteen Fayette and suburban car. Uh, this is to hire a consultant, uh, to evaluate, uh, where the odor is coming from, how to mitigate the odor. Dan, you wanna add anything?
Uh, I can add, Mayor. This one's on me.
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
So, um, I just shared with the board a little while ago that, um, there may be some, um, issues regarding the license at the. For this company, so I think it's the appropriate time for us to bring in a consultant. Uh, to provide all the information that we're looking for, to make sure that. Um, if they in fact do still have a license, which is questionable right now. Uh, but also to make sure that they're abiding by the guidelines in their license and the and the procedures that they have. As well as, um. Helping us mitigate the 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 smell and the odor, um, that comes from that facility. Uh, this would also be a self-examination of our own facility. Uh, for which we are responsible and we want to do whatever we can, um, if there is any odor, uh, coming from our from our facility, so. Um, this has been a an ongoing issue for many years, but, um, just now has, um. Um, the 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 community, um, has, um, really stepped up as far as the number of complaints and the degree of the uh, of the odor. So, we need to really look into it, and I think an impartial, um, consultant who does this work, this is a national company. That has an office in Nyack, so they're becoming from, I think he's in Nyack. Suffering, wherever that is.
It's close.
Rockland, yeah.
Rockland, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so this is a ten thousand dollar contract?
Yeah, I'd like to cap it at ten, um, just to send a message that we're not going to, you know, exceed ten, and I think the work can be done at that level.
Okay.
Um, but James and I met with the individual.
There's no details on hourly costs or how. I I I think the cap is great and I'm very thankful. We're at this point of just looking how to address this. My own, like, my question is, I didn't see the backup, how it's broken down or how are you gonna follow this?
Yeah, as far as an hourly?
Yeah, it doesn't say hourly or how they charge, it's very little, there's no detail whatsoever.
Right, so if you give me the cap at ten, I'll make sure, um, that I communicate to the board, uh, the hourly at the next meeting or by email.
Yeah, because the contract that would need to be, so and also please talk to to our attorney so that you can start lining up. Both the contract then and how, I'm sure he wants to talk to you.
The the. Victor, you're correct, because the way we left it off with this consultant when, uh, we first had that meeting, uh, very early, a couple of weeks ago, one morning. Was that, um, he would, uh, potentially, uh, do the background research, but if there is some, um, interpretation of what we have, then we would have our village attorney do that. So I agree with that, of course.
Right, okay, so let's get that, uh, backup, we'll put it on for two weeks.
Yeah, well, I'll let you know what the hourly rate is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes, uh, our agenda for tonight, seven thirty. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to end work session and have a little sustenance break.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
The. The, uh.
Bye, lovey. See you later.
Bye, lovey. See you later. Did you get him out?
There we go.
Sally, your mic's on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just want to make sure that a lot of people have been stopped by a hot mic. Okay, ready on the board? It's not from the bell tolls. Actually, we've got two minutes. Sorry. St. Thomas is always a little Jerry. You should be. All right. Trust the young chicks to see, or at least make the copy. Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Amerenik, September 27, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Your motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I'd like to point out there's emergency exits on my right, an emergency exit on my left. If you have a cell phone or another electronic device, please silence it. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Satchas? Lucas?
Yes.
Sephor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Nice. Caught up in the moment. Communication to the board. I want to communicate to the board just before Mr. Tippett gets up. Go ahead, Glenn. This is a five-minute time limit. That applies to everybody equally. So please limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening, board members. We had a couple of nice events over the weekend. We had the Monarch Festival, the first that we had in the village. I spoke to a couple of the committee members. I went down for a little while. Everybody seemed to have a very nice time. And then we had, I believe it was our last concert in the park. Gangsta bluegrass.
Gangsta grass.
Gangsta grass, which, well, it was like a mixture of hip hop and bluegrass, which was kind of a unique sound. But, you know, I thought it was a really, really nice concert. I think everybody enjoyed it.
It was.
We do have a couple of things coming up. We have a scarecrow building contest on October 1st. I challenge anybody, build a scarecrow, make it look like one of the trustees or the mayor, and maybe I'll put up a $25 bounty who does the best one. We also have the 100th anniversary of the public library in October. So let me start off 15-foot height rule for the flood areas of the village of Amerenik. The governor's office, the storm recovery, Hurricane Ida action plan, housing recovery, makes provisions for residents resilient measures to elevate mechanics. As part of elevating the mechanics, maybe we can ask them to help with the costs for people to elevate their entire house. If they're in the flood zone, the board should allow members of the of the public who own property within the flood zone, the option to raise their house up to 15 feet. Underneath has to be a half-pervious surface, and if they enclose or decide to lower their house, they lose their they lose the 15-foot variance. They have to stay within the footprint, or they have to go to the Board of Appeals. It's simple, and I've been asking the same question for 14 months. I wish that somebody would put it on the work session, either vote yes or no. I've been talking continually about the budget. We have a couple more items that we're spending today, another 100,000 or so on vehicles. And I just want to clarify, the village isn't going to go broke. The village isn't going to have to sell City Hall. We're not going to have to put time into debt, prison, or servitude. But when I say that we have a lot of cash demands, last year at this time, we had, as of August 31st, we had $13.5 million cash on demand. This year, we have 6.4. What's the difference? We're carrying a bridge and we're carrying a lot of sewer work. The reason I say you have to be conscientious of this is that we have a lot of projects. How are we timing them out? When are we getting money back? Or else what might happen is we might have to go to a ban. A ban is short-term borrowing, but it's an extra cost to the village. That's why looking at all your finances, short-term and long-term, to see exactly where you are is very important when looking at capital projects for the trustees. On the operating budget, we've added a significant amount. Right now, we in the last report, we got $4.1 million more in expenses than we do in revenues. We should be making some of that up according to forecasts. But remember, we're only four months into the year. Every time you add something into the operating budget, it's going to further stress it. It's just something that you have to be aware of. Again, this isn't anybody's fault. You happen to have more projects going on in this village at one time than we probably have going on in the history of the village.
You're welcome.
But you have to get together as a board, look at all your expenses, look at how much is spent, how much more has to be spent, what the income is, and when you expect the income to best make adjustments to what you have to do. When the water rates come in, my suggestion is you're going to have to raise them significantly because we already have significant money that we've put out for projects that aren't done yet, and we haven't even gotten to the capital projects with the county. So I would say at some point, when you start looking at the capital budget, look at what you've approved, what's in process, look at the numbers, and then what else has to be done this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfectly timed. Anyone else?
My name is Karen Justermsky. I live at 147 Gertre Avenue here in Amerenik. And I represent the, right now, the Washingtonville Neighborhood Association. And I'm just going to read a formal submission, a petition for establishing a no parking restriction on Madison Street and Old White Plains Road around Cape Memorial Park. Dear Mayor Murphy and Board of Trustees, residents of Washingtonville have united and formed a neighborhood association, WNA, Washingtonville Neighborhood Association. Together, we have created a petition and gathered 91 signatures in support of the resolution establishing a no parking restriction on Madison Street and Old White Plains Road around Cape Memorial Park. In summary, the residents of Washingtonville, as well as other residents of the village of Amerenik, have witnessed our quality of life and safety continuously compromised and impacted over the past few decades. This specific area is overparked and overburdened with commercial vehicles, gardening trucks, daily oversized tractor trailers, along with a large overparking and congestion issue. This area has a continuous and growing parking dilemma, which needs to be addressed as a whole. A comprehensive parking plan needs to be created to support our Safe Streets initiative. Our area is the most populated and underserved section of our community along with the continuous threat of flooding, which causes an increased safety risk with uncontrolled and permitted parking that currently exists. Parking in this area and beyond needs to be revamped and reinvented. With a continuous increase of vehicle traffic, along with high volumes of commercial trucks utilizing our dense streets as loading zones, vehicles are forced to maneuver into oncoming traffic and are at risk of accidents. To summarize, Washingtonville's quality of life issue impacts the village of Amerenik quality, the community as a whole. The village of Amerenik Board of Trustees needs to immediately improve the quality of life of our village residents and the area in which we live. The health, safety, and welfare of all village residents are a first priority that cannot be overlooked, forgotten, negotiated, or compromised. Below is a list of concerns that has been expressed by the residents of the village of Amerenik. One, idling cars and trucks creating carbon monoxide, impeding the equality of life access in public spaces. Two, vehicles border the village of Amerenik Public Park from corner to corner, unable to access to park freely. Three, high risk of uncontrollable vehicles creating a safety hazard boarding a perimeter of a public park. Four, obstructing left and right turns, vehicles double parking for long durations of time without enforcement. Five, DPW is unable to perform routine daily maintenance due to overparked vehicles boarding the perimeter of the park, corner to corner. Six, first responders unable to access park in an emergency situation due to overparked vehicles boarding perimeter of park, impeding the response time of the police, fire, and EMS. We support an open and fair transparency for the taxpayers and residents of the village of Amerenik, and welcome an open dialogue and public input from the village of Amerenik community to discuss this resolution in depth. Please read the submitted petition out loud for full transparency for the entire Board of Trustees and enter this petition into the September 27, 2022 Board of Trustees Legal Minutes. Respectfully, the WNA, Washingtonville Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
My name is James Abadi, 170 Washington Street, also participant WNA. You know, I was sitting through the work session, listening, and I just wanted to show, we had sent a bunch of pictures in to you also, Mayor, of how bad the traffic and the parking is. I have a bunch of them here, how dangerous it is on that corner. I just don't understand, and I'd like to just state that the traffic committee, the police department, and the parks department all approved the taking of the two cars on one and one on Old White Plains Road and two on Madison. Why you guys are trying to change it to standing only? I don't understand. If you look at the pictures, that's not going to help. You're still going to have the cars there? I mean, the cars, I don't know if I can show you guys these cars. If you look on your, if you look on your phone, Mayor, I sent it to you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're actually head-on. You're making the turn, you're trying to go on Old White Plains Road. The cars are head-on because the cars are trying to turn on Madison, and the cars are just in the way around the park. It's been that way. I don't know why we're changing, especially when three committees, you know, and the police department are saying it's a danger. What the heck is you used to having committees if we're not going to listen to them? That was my concern, and I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Simba O'Connor, Washington Street. I'm going to remove myself as a member.
Uh, I'm gonna remove myself as a member of Officer Rec Commission Committee Member, and I'm speaking of AF myself to O'Connor. Uh, just to follow with Mr. Abate, uh, this has been going on for quite a long time. I sent this board so many emails with attachments of pictures of what's going on with the trucks that this board could take action now versus wait another two or three weeks. This is a decades-old issue. We need to pull that park until in line as genunzio. Genunzio is the staple of what we're looking for for Pape's Park. I don't know why the dish, the the situation is with this board that you can't step up and pull the trigger and get this done. It's a quality of life issue as is explained by the petition. I support the petition. I'm also a member of the WNA. And this board needs to act on it. We don't need to kick this back over to the Traffic Commission. No standing is not gonna work. Let's face it. The Police Department doesn't enforce anything down in the last few years. Let's face it. So no parking will be the right thing to do on Old White Plains Road. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Robert Stark, seven for Palmer Court. I'm on the Traffic Committee. Uh, I wanna talk about Madison and Old White Plains Road, two aspects of it. One are the four signs that are piled on top of each other on Old White Plains Road. At the start of Old White Plains Road by Center Street by, and of course, Dan identified that as a sign pollution. May maybe somebody can remove some of those signs. But I wanna focus on specifically the one sign, the thirty-minute parking that we're now told is an advisory sign. This is a rhetorical question. Who can identify the difference between a legitimate sign that somebody has to obey or receive a ticket or an advisory sign?
I I don't think that, I don't think he called it an advisory sign. I think he called it a mistaken sign. Am I wrong?
Yeah, it'd be.
So should it go down?
Yeah, well, this, either it should come down or the code should reflect what's in the field.
Okay, fine. So if it comes down, problems solved.
Well, or we change.
So wha- what would be, what would be the parking so beyond uh that one block on Old, it it becomes sixty, um, sixty-minute restricted parking, right?
Um, I think the restriction has listed a code. There's no parking for sixty minutes. The east side between Mamaronek and Grant, I think that's what it said. So, right, that that's what, that's what the restriction is in the code.
Are there any more advise, court advisory signs that people don't have to obey?
There's no such thing as advisory signs. There's mistaken signs and there's right signs.
There are, there are many reasons why you could have a sign that is in the field that's not in the code and vice versa. So I, I don't know.
Right, recently. Oh, the, there was a U-turn sign on Mamaronek that wasn't in the code. We had to put it in the code.
Correct, yeah.
The other aspect on uh that corner, Old White Plains Road and Madison that I wanna address is there's my understanding that the value of removing some of those parking spaces was to provide delivery spots.
Yes.
So that, I I didn't hear that mentioned. Um, so is that something that's gonna be considered or permitted? Are they gonna be signed?
Okay, let let me just address this for a second. At the last, we we are tonight going to remove, you know, as was mentioned before, this is a problem that's been there for decades. Tonight, we were planning on removing the parking on Madison. That was requested. Uh, there was a suggestion at the Board of Trustees meeting two weeks past uh by trustee Natchez that we look at allowing uh commercial vehicles to park there making deliveries uh to the businesses in the area. Uh, we looked at that. We've just sent that. We're sending that back to the Traffic Committee. But tonight, as, you know, this has been going on for decades, something's happening tonight. And, uh, you know, the Traffic Commission, well, wants to look at that and give us a recommendation on that suggestion. Then, you know, we could, we could have that other half done either one way or the other in a month. But that's where we are.
Because the idea of having delivery uh trucks park where there's no parking now would alleviate and reduce some of the double parking.
That's, that was the idea.
Mr. O'Connor, right, so there's no parking, no stopping, and no stand. No, no stopping is actually the most severe restriction.
Yes.
No parking means you can, you can't park there, but you can idle there to uh load goods and passengers. No stopping means you can, you can't park there and you can't load goods there, but you can load passengers. No stopping, nothing at all in this case. The proposal for Madison is a no-stopping proposal, which would mean no co- no vehicle there at all, whether it be for dropping off passengers, dropping off or unloading merchandise or parking. It is the most restrictive, which it, which is what is the sign, reflect the sign that's there now.
Yes, which is moving two call links in.
Correct.
Ms. Lord.
Hi, Laura Abadi. I am recu- I can't say the word, recusing myself as the
No, you're not recusing yourself. You're identifying yourself.
No, I am stepping away from that. I'm going to speak as a member of
No, I understand, but but we'll, we'll, just, just to clear the, when, when you're a member of a board of commission, you identify yourself as a member of the Board of Commission and then say I'm speaking as a citizen.
Thank you for the call up. I am identifying myself as a member of the Board of Traffic, but I am going to speak as a Washingtonville resident and as a member of the WNA, which is Washingtonville Neighborhood Association. I am piggybacking off of the last entry in the work session in regard to the um older consultant and the transfer center, which is private, which I'm discussing, three thirteen Waverly Avenue, I believe. But I am going to introduce a concern that we have, and it's in regard to the food scraps. I wanna first state that I'm thankful for Jerry Barbero because he is actually moving on this and listening and hearing us, and he is making it happen. Nancy Tom said it best, Jerry's a rock star. And we appreciate him as as mu- much as we can possibly shout out. But to begin with the food scraps. We have a large rat infestation in Washingtonville. And that rat infestation is derived from the transfer station and is moving in all directions as far as the Avalon. The food scraps have been, have begun on three, one, twenty, twenty-two, seven months after Ida. I do not understand why we would allow something like that to happen in ground zero, in a place that floods the most, in a, in a, in a zone that is susceptible to being underwater at any moment. Mamaronek VOM picks up food scraps every Wednesday in the AM until it's completed. The cost of the manpower for two men, one time per week, is six hundred dollars. Times that by fifty-two, that's thirty-one thousand dollars. Food scraps are allowed to be dropped off Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays from nine to one. Residents from the VOM, Rye, Harrison, Yonkers, and I believe Scarsdale, I could be wrong. If Scarsdale is still in the game, if they're not, I'm not up to date. But they're allowed to dump their food scraps in a hazardous location, which is a flood zone. The VOM recycling center, and it's placed in in buckets for days outside on the ground where it's allowed to rot, and that's what we're smelling, encoupled with the live garbage that's being dumped at the private transfer station. I sent a video last evening to the board and showed them on Labor Day, which was September fifth, that suburban carting, or what you would call the private transfer center, is dumping live garbage on the ground in that transfer center. And that transfer center is on top of our river. Live garbage on top of our river, right next to it, no matter what, which way you slice it, it's just running into our water stream. The food scraps are stored in pails on the ground for all to smell as it rots and obstructs our quality of life. The barrels of food scraps are picked up on Thursdays, sometimes on Fridays, from the VOM lot and brought over and dumped into a payloader bucket and taken to suburban and weighed on their scale. Then dumped into a trailer in the suburban private transfer center where it sits for a day, sometimes a week, depending on when that pickup is scheduled. The refuse, the refuse gets the opportunity to rot along with the private garbage dump there as well. We're getting a one-two punch. I don't understand how it's profitable at fifty houses a year, three hundred dollars, maybe fifty times three hundred equals fifteen thousand that we're collecting, and that we're paying out thirty-one thousand dollars for a man to collect that. We're pretty much in the minus eleven thousand dollars. And then we're not paying to dump at that point. But at the expense of us, at at the expense of the residents who have to smell this and live with this, we were thirty-five feet deep in water on Plaza Avenue. That's the gauge at at the height of Ida. The water was over the Madison Street sign. Anything on the ground in our personal transfers center, it for the VOM and the private, was moved, rushed, pulled into the water in our yards, in our homes. I asked for action. Maybe we can't remove the transfer center at this point, but we have two transfer centers within our county that's in Yonkers and in White Plains that can handle this. A problematic area like Washingtonville and the industrial area shouldn't have to bear that burden. I think that's neglectful, and and we're paying the cost for that by the smell and the hazard, and now it's rats. And the rats are everywhere, and they're not small. They're large. They're in our parks, they're in our yards, they're in our garbage, and they're all derived from that one area. We have to do something.
We will, and, uh, you know, tonight, we we approved the consultant to help us prove that case.
I appreciate listening, but it's
I understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Anna Bianco, I am a Washingtonville resident, been there for at least forty years and also a member of the Washingtonville Association. And um I thank Laura for speaking up regarding the garbage. I was not, I live in the immediate area. I was not aware of what was going on. Nobody came to the residence or even speak about it. Things just happened that get pushed in into our community there. And then you have to find out secondhand that the garbage is being trans- transported now as well as this recyclable material now, this raw material dumped on the ground. It's it's unbearable. We have been trying to I've been involved since the eighties trying to fight this corporation, making things better. It hasn't. I know, Mayor, you were involved, Mr. Lanimer, you were helping us in the eighties. We thought we're, you know, getting somewhere. There were so many meetings and people that they were we thought we were making a difference. We were trying to, but it worked out for a while. Pandemic airtime was amazing, you know, we didn't hear that much, not, not that much was going on. But lately, it is, let me tell you, a typical day of mine. I get up, upbeat awakened by, at four-thirty in the morning, by the rumbling sounds of trucks going in and out of the transfer station. As I go down, trying to get a cup of coffee, trying to open my windows, and they, I can't. There's no way, because I get a whiff of this air, this garbage. As the wind blows, it just, it will, it's overwhelming. So I have to shut myself. I have to, I thank God that I have central air conditioning. I would, I don't know what I would do and how I would be able to live in my neighborhood or any of my neighbors living there. You know, nobody's really complaining that much now because they're so tired of fighting this. And every, you appear the same thing. Well, yes, you know, the village is hand to tide, um, well, we can go to the county. Go to the county, now you gotta go to the D E C, D E C, you have to go to the state. Nothing ever being done about it. So tonight I'm here to, I'm going to say just one thing. I'm not gonna, you know, it's a corporation. They have to work. They employ a lot of people. I applaud them for what they're trying to do. I mean, it's garbage. It's a business. So I'm putting, I'm challenging the village of Mamaronek, the County of Westchester, and Hoco's office, as well as the D E C, to find a suitable location so that this corporation can go on and about their business at an area where it does not affect the people. It's an embarrassment for people coming off of the ninety-five towards Mamaronek to come off that ninety-five exit eighteen, and they have to pass, but they, first of all, we are, they're being greeted by these overwhelming trucks, filthy trucks. Huge day in, day out, I mean, every moment of the day. All you have to do is just stand on the corner there on Fenway Road on their way, passing Mamaronek Avenue, the schools, the kids, I mean, all day long. It's really, it it I I don't understand this, how we are, we allowed to, for this to happen for so many years. I've been there, like I said, over forty years now. And there's gotta be a way. There's gotta be somebody that finally has enough nerves, enough to, enough power to, and I'm sure there is, you know, just gotta get it together, sitting at the table and saying, let's do something about for Mamaronek, something for the people of Mamaronek and the village itself. Because it's affecting us now. It's going to affect the future generations that we have growing up now. Do we really want that? Find a suitable location to move, relocate the company. I have nothing against it, but it's affecting me in such a way that I'm at a loss, you know.
I understand.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Well, have a good day. I'm sorry about this.
Mr. Abadi, WNA again, one seventy Washington Street. I just wanted to, maybe I can make a suggestion. I worked for Suburban for several years. Uh the transfer station shouldn't be in a residential neighborhood anyway. It's right on the brook. Uh, they have three transfer stations, Malvern, Yonkers, and White Plains. I worked at all three of them. And uh, there's no reason why they can't be dumping there. They take everything else there. You know, uh, even the, even the recycle and food program, maybe they can figure that out. Yonkers is is huge. Um, they have, and Malvern and and White Plains, they bring all their other garbage there. Why, why do they have to bring this little bit of Mamaronek in a residential neighborhood, especially that's on the brook? I think if we worked on that, I'm sure we could get it done. You know, this was passed a long time ago, this transfer station. Shouldn't have never happened.
Seventies, I think.
Yeah, it shouldn't have ever happened, but uh, you know, it's been there for all these years. It's time that it changes, you know, it's not fair to anybody. So that's my suggestion anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hi, Weena O'Connor, Washington Street. Um, I'd just like to add, you know, with everything going on down at that transfer station, I'd like to request some kind of um testing be done. I have to assume that there is some kind of um hazardous material in there. Um, just speaking with residents in the Washingtonville area, past and present, um, if you take a survey of the amount of people that have had cancer, uh, specifically thyroid cancer, um, the number is huge and it's, it's very concerning. Um, I've been there all my life, uh, but I know people who are still there, that they've lived there all their lives, and people have moved out, and they all have the same issue. So I really think you guys should be taking this seriously. Um, you know, aside from the fact that it smells like there's literally dead bodies there when you drive by, it smells really bad. Um, I really think there could be um, uh, you know, hazardous issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
To O'Connor, Washington Street, I'm gonna remove, remove myself again from the Parks Recreation Commission. Speaker AF myself to O'Connor. Um, north is north. I'm gonna rip off the bandage. How much more do the Washingtonville people that endure down there? I'm serious. We got the flying down there. We got the crap in the air that we're all breathing and coming from suburban carting that we're hearing. We have cancer now. We got truck issues, we got parking issues. What, how much more do Washingtonville people gotta take? Poor Anna Bianco and her and family living on Plaza Madison, listening to the noise across the street. You gotta take the problems from Washingtonville, folks, and put it on the top and start from the top down. We need help. We got flooding, we got rats, we got suburban carting nonsense. We got traffic issues, we got drug and prostitution stuff going on. At what point do the scenes break for the residents of Washingtonville? We pay our taxes. What break do we get? None. I'm begging this board, do something, help us provide a solution for these issues, and let's get on the move here because we're getting tired of being tired. Thank you. Provide a solution for these issues and let's get on the move here because we're getting tired of being tired, thank you.
Well, Russell Moon, currently every part of it. Um, a couple of points that raised is fine, interesting, um, Danny may remember this, I don't know if it was Suburban or Covanta. Uh, I believe and I asked Bob to check it out, there was a court decision and agreement. That nothing is to be dumped in that area unless it's construction material, that's number one. Number two, a point was just brought up. Uh, actually, and for hidden reasons, obviously, not to name names, but I believe. Uh, in regards to whether it be cancer or anything else, if you look at the description, whether it be state, federal. Or actually local county, any incidents of health of two or more is considered a cluster. I believe that clusters already exist in the village of Maric. Whether it be in that specific area, whether it be cancer or specifically, there are three employees of the village of Maric. That had serious incidents of health, some very serious to the point where. Didn't know if they were gonna survive or not, I think it is imperative, and as a matter of fact, it's required. If you look at the requirements, when you have a cluster, it must be reported to the county and to the State Department of Health. I believe that where you have the sanitation department, D P W. The county and the state should be reviewing the health conditions, see what's going on. The garbage that these guys pick up every day and particularly after the floods. Is so infected that it's unbelievable and it's probably going around to everyone who lives in that area that's flooded, it's it's. Unconscionable to let these people work and live in that condition.
George. Good evening, George Latimer, Westchester County Executive. Um, the issue of the day is not why I stopped by, but let me say that if you're planning to pull some resources together to discuss these issues. I'll make sure that county health department, county D E F personnel are there at the meeting. And you can go over whatever the priorities are and the things that you you may need the county to do, some of the, some of what we can do is helpful. Some of it will involve the state having to be at the table, but we'll bring the county to the table. So let me know on that, that is separate from my visit, my visit very briefly. Was to encourage you, if you haven't already put it on your list of things to discuss. Is a resolution by the board in support of the Environmental Bond Act issues, which is on the ballot this year. It's on the ballot November eighth, of course, early voting, people vote before that. Uh, it's a state bond and the state legislature put it on, it was bipartisan after both Republicans and Democrats supported putting this on the ballot. But we know that whenever you have a bond act or referendum, people don't remember to turn a ballot over, so sometimes they're. They they need the additional information about it, uh, I'm certainly not, I know you have limited time here, I'm gonna stay with you with it. Uh, if you haven't gotten information, that would be helpful to you, I'm sure you get some, although I'm sure you have some access to as well. The bond issue is broken into component pieces and if it passes, it's gonna allow your village and our county and everybody else. To have a pool of money that we can bid on for a variety of projects, some of them are things that matter very greatly in this community, about flood mediation. Of infrastructure, so I would encourage you to look at it, determine if your honorable board can pass a resolution. Bedford Town, Austin Town, Austin Village have done so, other counties, other towns and villages are looking at doing that. And it's basically a statement that 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 you encourage the the bond act to pass, obviously, it's two points, if you people make up their mind about what they wanna do. But I know from our standpoint, if we're going to make progress in some of these environmental issues, we don't have sufficient money at the county, the village and the town will do it. And state bond act money being available would be very helpful to your community and to your government and to our government as well. So that was my purpose in visiting and again, because of the issues we've heard here tonight, just by happenstance. Uh, if there's a meeting set up to discuss them, I'm happy to bring county resources to the table.
Thank you, George, I think, you know. Would it be possible for the Department of Health to check the air quality?
Yes.
And then they would?
Yep.
And.
If you want to sit down to.
It was.
George just wanna sit down and have a discussion.
Yes.
You know, overall, to determine.
Well, yeah, like the rat issues. Rats.
Issues of rats, that's county health department, so the county isn't the table for that. In terms of, in terms of moving an existing business, that's another thing entirely, that's beyond our scope, we can't mandate it. But there are things that that we could do in terms of health and department inspectors, which are our inspectors, not yours.
Yeah.
And that's what we work out in some meeting, have a conversation, determine what county can do, what village can do. And then and then determine what is it you gotta go, you have to go to the state to do.
Thank you, George, is is there a sample resolution on a bond act?
There is, I'll make sure you get a copy of it, it's a sample of what was passed by Bedford.
Yeah, so we don't have to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can look at it, certainly, your your board can discuss it. Now, I would encourage it if you can, if you feel comfortable.
Yeah, I do. You go ahead.
I mean, I've been telling people, George, that it's the most important thing on the ballot for us in November. And and that that says a lot because there's other things on the ballot. You know, so 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 um, if if nothing else happens, that has to pass. Because that's gonna save taxpayers of this community money, there are things that we have to do anyway that we can get money for if that passes.
I think it's important to note it's bipartisan, that legislation, both sides of the hour voted to put this on the ballot, but it does require voters to agree. And you know, whatever the climate is out there, when people upset about one thing that affects the way they feel about other things, so.
Thank you, thank you for coming by.
I thank you for letting me interrupt you.
Thanks, George, have a good night, pal.
I just wanted to add, if you do start doing some testing, it would be great if we could, you can do air, soil and water. For that area.
I'll see what the county can do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, alright. To get onto the agenda, lest somebody else has a burning desire. As they say. Uh, no public hearings tonight. Order the bills. Uh, tonight's grand total is one million five hundred sixty three thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars and fifty seven cents. Are there any questions or concerns? In public?
One comment, there's a bill for a matter I've was, been refused for six years now. Send this out and it's just a hundred dollars, but it involves that matter, so.
Just noting that.
So I'm just noting.
Okay, thank you. That's all you need to do, a good man, uh, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
To four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Dog park's gonna be held.
Well, do we want to announce we're looking for more people?
We were gonna do it on Friday, but if anybody's watching and they have a. Desire to be involved in helping the village of America find a suitable location for a dog park. Please send your resume in to Sally Roberts, that's S Roberts at B O M N Y dot org. Uh, it requires someone who's willing to work fast, work diligently and work for free. So if you meet those qualifications, please, please contact Sally Roberts. Uh, alrighty.
What a deal.
Resolution scheduling public hearing on P L L D, okay, that's gonna be held, the tree law, uh, funding for construction. Resolution authorizing additional funding for construction inspection, construction services for the Hillside Avenue Bridge of Maric River replacement. Dan, can you give us a short?
Sure, um, the construction length has gone on a little bit longer than anticipated. A lot of it because we were delayed by the state D O T, so our construction inspector has had to have been out there longer than originally anticipated. Uh, this is the request, I believe it's for an additional one hundred seventeen thousand.
He was supposed to be nine months, he had to go twelve months, so it's really, we're increasing it by a third.
Yeah, and this is part of the additional funding request that we've made of Westchester County for additional grant.
Right, we've asked Westchester County, when George is gone, when we need the money, he's gone. We asked Westchester County for an additional million dollars.
Uh, one point three, give or take.
Okay, thank you.
And where does that request stand at this point?
Uh, my understanding is that the, they're trying to get it. Onto the Board of Legislators' agenda for their October meeting.
Right. Because we have to pay the guy one way or the other. We're paying him not contingent on if we get the money, paying him as a good faith thing. I'll make the motion, second, Orgy, please.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez. Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee Tofurk.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Uh, new business, uh, resolution authorizing traffic safety commission recommendations for no parking restrictions on Old White Plains Road. And Madison, and we're gonna bifurcate this and we're going to take first, uh, the Madison. Because what we have here in our agenda is not what you would want anyone about Old White Plains Road. For those who are watching. So. Let's go to this. So I'm gonna read it out loud. Resolve that the following amendment to chapter three twenty six Vehicle and Traffic Law of the Code of the Village of America. Be and is hereby amended as follows. Uh, no stopping, Madison Street, the south side from Old White Plains Road. To a point sixty feet east thereof. Right then?
That's right.
Yes, alright, I will make that motion, second. Call roll.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
To four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye, like I said before, hopefully we'll be able to work on Old White Plains Road and have that before us in a month.
Uh, resolution requesting that the village, no, resolution requesting Westchester County remove center abutment. From the Anita Lane Valley Place Bridge. Uh, it's a, it's a bridge that no one really accesses, it's just, it holds the county sewer line. Uh, that crosses the Maric River there, uh, the county, a few years ago. Removed one of the wing walls, but there's still center abutment, we're gonna ask the county if they can find a way to move, remove the center abutment. To have a little more free flow in the the river at that point. Thank you, you you checked me, I appreciate that, uh, any questions or concerns?
We modified it just to make sure it reflects this calendar, this fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, as per trustee Natchez's suggestion. Their motion. Then moved, second, Mr. Young, call roll.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez, Lucas.
Yes.
Before, Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Good idea, trustee Natchez. Resolution authorizing street closures for the twenty twenty Spooktacular Halloween Parade and the Turkey Trot. Okay, so this would close Maranic Avenue for Spooktacular on October twenty third. From eleven A M to one P M, uh, from Halsted Avenue all the way down to Boston Post Road, it's a lovely event, the kids like it. And it's a good day for your family, uh, you can continue down to Harbor Island Park, but it's 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 really a fun time. So that's one of it and the second part is for the Turkey Trot. And the closures of West Boston Post Road from Harbor Island Park to Orient Avenue, Orient Avenue from West Boston Post Road. To Bleeker Avenue, Bleeker Avenue from Orient Avenue to Rushmore Avenue, Rushmore Avenue. From Bleaker Avenue to Orient Avenue. And that's basically the route that goes into Orient, then back down, uh, Boston Post Road and ends up in the park. Used to be five miles, now it's three point one, it's five K. Uh, I'll make the motion, second. Augustino.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
And I'm sure this will all be on the website so people know the exact times and.
Yeah, it says it right there.
Uh, I mean, just it'll be pushed out on the web.
Oh yeah, and it'll be pushed out by Rob, Rob and Gennito sends out the village informationals. Uh, F one fifty for recreation. Uh, Dan, a quick synopsis.
So, um, these are rising into the capital budget for several years for planned purchase. Or replacement of vehicles for the recreation department for this fiscal year. Uh, we use the New York State Mini Bit System and we're able to locate a Ford F one fifty. For the recreation department, essentially the same explanation.
Okay, any questions or concerns?
No.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augustino, Laura, second.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez. Lucas.
Yes.
To four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Uh, resolution authorizing the purchase of one Ford F one fifty for Marine Education Center. Uh, Marine Education Center naturalist is now using a very small car to transport. Uh, some very odiferous, uh. Yes. Yes, and it it's, this will help her do her job and she goes outside to a lot of schools and. Different areas to educate the people about the long outsound, and this will further her good works. I will make the motion.
Second.
My friend Orgy.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Voting no, because I believe that the village needs to better allocate. Share vehicles, we're getting vehicle heavy, uh, and why they're all needed. There's a lot of downtime and I think we could schedule it better.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes, yes.
Trustee Tofurk.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Uh, resolution authorizing budget amendment for village engineering department. Jerry, you want to take this?
Yeah, Mayor, we're just shifting some money around within the department so that we can outfit the engineer's office with the proper equipment.
So what this is, is that we're hiring a full-time village engineer beginning October third. And this is some of the equipment and some of the software that he will need to better do his job.
Yep.
Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Nora, second, call roll, please.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yeah. Lucas.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye, item four G is to add an item to the agenda.
The item is a, an appointment to the ethics board, so I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are hereby appointing Mister Dan Carson to the Ethics Board, Mister Carson was a. Longtime village resident, uh, and he was very involved in the village at House Ethics Committee, he was the chair and did an excellent job. Uh, and he's a lawyer who is very conversant in the ethics code and in New York State ethics in general. So I'll make the motion to add Mister Carson to the Ethics Board.
Second, with pleasure.
Augustino.
Trustee is young.
I'm gonna abstain because I haven't met the man, but everybody seems to think he's great and I'm sure he'll be terrific.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee Tofurk.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Okay, second round of communication to the board.
Once again into the breach we go. A couple of things that were mentioned tonight, what is the village of Maric doing about rat control? Do we have anybody hired, can we go and look for somebody to uh, try to on a local level deal with rat control?
We we usually send our code enforcement officer to cite the business and we don't, we don't have a rat patrol. I don't know if you remember that TV show.
Yes. Um.
If you, you have to come to the mic, I'm not saying anything from the audience.
Um, as for water quality checking, it should probably be done. At the Rockland Avenue Bridge on one end and at the Mason at the other end. It should be done three times, it should be done when the river is running dry, when the river is running after a slight rainfall. And after a heavy rainfall and see if there's a difference in the water quality. Uh, from where the Rockland Avenue Bridge is after the Mason, and then you can see if that area is actually adding to pollutants. Uh, there's a couple of things that are off the agenda, but I just wanna comment on. Uh, the, we have four entities looking for free parking. Um, I believe we're negotiating, um, uh, some kind of deal with them. Uh, the only thing that I would input is for L M C T V. And for the, um. And for the Emmeline Theater, they should have their free parking right below where their building is, there's a parking lot down there. Uh, their designated parking should be there, the American Legion should be against the wall where the American Legion is. And then the library should be the, uh, the top of the, um. uh, Hunter Avenue. That way you don't have, you know, thirty, forty cars in the one parking lot, you can, you can uh, spread them out a little bit. Uh, twenty-five mile an hour speed limit that you're looking to place um, village wide. I have no problem with it except for one road, Boston Post Road. To take uh, Boston Post Road and make a, a, a double lane um, X uh, highway for um, basically runs from Maine down to Florida. Uh, it's already twenty miles an hour in front of the high school. There are no um, private residents directly with driveways on the Boston Post Road. It's thirty miles an hour in the town of Maric, it's thirty miles an hour in Rye. We don't need to be from the Friendly Village to the Speed Trap Village. That's the only road.
It, we're not doing it to trap cars, we're doing it to protect our residents, especially our children.
But, but you're, you're not protecting residents on Boston Post Road, that's why I said that's the only exception.
Have you ever walked down Boston Post Road?
Yes, I have.
It's, it's nothing but kids. It's nothing but kids.
In front of the school, and, and that's already twenty miles an hour.
All the way going up and down. It, it, you're wrong about this.
It's, it's, it's a double lane
New York City, New York City, every street's twenty-five miles per.
New York City is completely a different animal, there's a million people on every street.
It's a much
Well, that you're, all I'm giving is my opinion, Tom. My opinion is that it's nothing but commercial practice, we'd be the only ones with Boston Post Road at twenty-five miles an hour. And we don't enforce forty miles an hour.
We'd be the first ones, not the only ones.
If, if you don't enforce thirty, why you go to twenty-five? Why don't you try enforcing what you have first?
Thank you.
Okay? Um, we uh, keep talking about rebuilding village hall, somebody pointed out to me there are a lot of office buildings that are available here in the village of Maric. We might be able to get a building for six million dollars, put a five hundred thousand dollars into it, refurb it, and instead of going from scratch to put a brand new village hall in by an existing building and turn it into a, a village hall and, and do it for half the money. It says that might be something where you put a small committee together, look at every available property that's in the village, see what ones that may be suited for a village hall. Uh, give the staff a list, the last, the staff can narrow it down to you when you can make a decision. We think this is the best building. That still leaves uh, the parking lot across the street, if you wanna try to do something with affordable housing.
Hmm.
Uh, have that whole parking, Hunter Avenue parking lot redone, and above it be able to put affordable housing as units over there. So, you know, just outside the box, and then uh, the last one is done.
Thank you.
Have a, have a, have a good um, Turkey Day.
Maybe we should call it Tippett Tower.
Turkey Day. Uh, thank you though, my friend. Um, anyone else? Did you wanna say something? Okay. Okay, we, we, we're not having dialogue with the audience, it's, it's, it happens up there. It happens up there.
Forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, I'm sorry.
All right. Uh, report from village manager.
Mayor, I have two um, file for the records, it's TNT Language Solution Agreement and the agreement with HVEA for the Tompkins Avenue Bridge. That's it for me.
Thank you. Report from clerk treasurer?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to announce the resignation of Matthew Talons, Talison from the tree committee. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, no report from the village attorney, uh, minutes, commissions, boards and committees, minutes of the board of trustees work session, regular session of September twel- twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, minutes of the BAR meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, minutes of the planning board meeting of July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the board of traffic commissioners of April twelfth, July twelfth, and August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the tree committee meeting of August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, before we adjourn, I just wanna point out that our, our fellow citizens and our brothers and sisters in Florida are going to be experiencing uh, something that we have all experienced many times. Uh, horrific flooding and the impact of the huge storm that it's heading right their way. Uh, we, you know, we, we send them hopes, prayers, and uh, uh, you know, uh, support when they need it. Uh, you know, it's just uh, the way things are going, that these storms are happening with greater rapidity and greater ferocity. So, you know, tomorrow it's uh, Florida, hopefully we'll dodge that bullet, but uh, you know, I'm sure there'll be uh, ways to help our friends in Florida, so please be on the lookout uh, for any Red Cross donations to, to help them out, because God knows, a lot of people helped us out uh, when, when we needed it. So now, you know, now it's time to pay back, right?
Hmm.
Uh, but uh, I just want to uh, end with that, and I'll uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Good night.
Thirty inches.
Thirty inches of rain.
Where's your, where's your mother in Florida? Is she that good?
Nah, she's going over my, my, my brother looks there too. So they're all gonna drown together.
My mother was in Manatee County.
Yeah.
And I guess because I visited there somehow, come on there.
Oh.
Your text saw that.
Really?
Yeah. Well, she, she rented a new, new home, which is, you know, anything built in Florida after nineteen ninety-eight is pretty
Yeah, but you know what, the it's built, it's The house we own is um, it's a small, one-bedroom house, it's, it's not a player, you know, but thirty inches of rain.